I'd like to call this meeting to order. It's the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, held August 6, 2013 at 5:00 PM at the Cottonwood Recreation Center. Deputy Clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Olinsky?
Here.
Councilmember Pratt?
Here.
Councilmember Dowling?
Here.
Mayor Jones?
Here.
Councilmember Garrison, Councilmember Howagie, and Vice Mayor Pfeiffer are all absent, but we'll be calling in Vice Mayor Pfeiffer later in the meeting.
Okay. And no notice from the other two council members, Councilmember Howagie or Garrison, as to their absence. Hopefully, they'll come in, hopefully, a little bit late, maybe. Okay, the next item is the Pledge of Allegiance, and we have with us tonight Barbara Denver. And I would just like to share a little bit of information about her. She's with us tonight, and if you want to just go ahead and go up to the lectern, and I'll share with the public a little bit of information about you. Barbara Denver, and there are some acronyms here that I don't know what they mean, but MHA, FACHE, and the most important part is Interim President and CEO of the Verde Valley Medical Center. Ms. Denver became Interim President and CEO of Verde Valley Medical Center in December of 2012, so just about six months now. Prior to assuming the interim president role, she served from 2009 to 2012 as the Vice President of Professional Services and Medical Group Operations for VVMC, and from 2008 to 2009 as Vice President of Professional Services for the Flagstaff Medical Center. Before joining Northern Arizona Health, she was with the Peace Health in Oregon for 13 years, where she served in a number of progressively responsible leadership roles, including Senior Vice President for Clinical Institutes from 2004 to 2008, Regional Vice President of Business Development, Cardiovascular and Medical Group Operations from 1997 to 2004, and Executive and System Director, 1995 to 1997. Ms. Denver received her Bachelor of Science in Business Administration Accounting from the University of Arizona in 1983, and her Master of Science in Healthcare and Administration from California College of Health Sciences in 2005. She is a lean Six Sigma Green Belt, whoa, and a Fellow of the American College of Healthcare Executives. Would you all stand to say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we have a certificate for you. We would like to thank you for your good citizenship and leading the country. Thank you very much. And we'll be carrying a little bit more of our history in a short while. Okay, the next item is a brief summary of current events by the mayor, city council, and/or city manager. The public body does not propose, discuss, deliberate, or take legal action on any matter brought up during this summary unless the specific matter is properly noticed for legal action. Mr. Bartosz.
Mayor, councilmembers, just a couple of quick items. Just a reminder to the public that this week is our first week of school. In fact, today, I guess, was the first day of school, and our police officers were very visible out in the school areas, so we're just asking people to drive slowly and particularly watch those school crossing areas. There was a dinner Friday night to support the Granite Mountain firefighters and their families, and that occurred over at Blazenem, and it's our understanding that they raised about $70,000 for the families, so that's a good job. Also, we closed out the Little League season with a tournament here that hosted many teams from around the state. They stayed for a long weekend, and they were very, very impressed with the quality of our fields and our facilities. And a large thanks goes to our police chief, Jody Fanning, who did a lot of ground maintenance work for us out at the field, so we greatly appreciate that. But they were very impressed, and we now have a couple of year-round leagues that are looking at holding tournaments up here as well. So it was real positive. That's it, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Councilmembers. Mr. Olinsky, I know what you were doing this weekend. Do you have a report on that?
Yeah, so there's a Leadership Academy that's based out of Phoenix called the Flynn Brown Academy, and they hold an annual retreat every year in the summer, and this year it was held up in Cottonwood. So the mayor and myself entertained the hopeful dignitaries all weekend, and we took them for a hike. Mayor Jones led them through Old Town on a historic commercial district tour, and all in all, they were very impressed with our community, and many of them promised to come back, and it was just nice to be able to showcase the good things that we have going on up here.
Absolutely. I had people constantly coming to me saying, "We just love Cottonwood," so that was great. Council, Mr. Pratt?
Yeah, I attended my first Verde Valley Regional Economic Organization meeting on Friday.
Great.
And I was very pleased to see that people are really, it is a regional effort. People from all our communities are getting together and work on improving our economy in the Verde Valley, so it was a really productive meeting, and it's a good active group. I was happy to see that.
Great, and our council has passed a resolution in support of them as the economic development group of the Verde Valley.
Right, and the City of Cottonwood's worked very closely with them.
Right, well, thank you for giving us that update. Mr. Dowling?
I did attend, since the last meeting, I did attend the VVTPO meeting, Verde Valley Transportation Planning Organization, and along, same along the same lines of Mr. Pratt, it was just really nice to see the inner workings of the region and how well the region does up here to work together. Some of the stuff that, you know, it was nice to see our transportation manager was there, and he was interfacing with some of the other people, and they were working on ideas to get people around the valley, over to the nation in Camp Verde and out through Cornville, and it's all real formative, but it's really nice to see that up and coming and trying to keep things moving.
Great. Yeah, we've worked collaboratively, and we're working collaboratively right now with Camp Verde and other communities on Highway 260, trying to get that upgraded to four lanes. So, okay, let's see, it's been like three weeks since we met, so watch out, it's going to be a long one. Oh, no, not too long. On Jan, or July 17, staff and I attended a meeting that I called for the Equestrian Center, and we met with the Verde Valley Fairground Board and some user groups and some volunteers, and we're going to meet again, but what we're trying to do is just work on, you know, the city has committed to maintaining this, although almost no one in the city uses an equestrian center. It's mostly that we're maintaining it for our community, our Verde Valley, and even the state of Arizona. And as council knows, we've been voted twice best dirt, so it's a beautiful center, and we really are blessed to have it, and our staff works very hard. As you know, we don't have a big budget on this item, but our staff works very hard to keep up our end of the deal. It was a three-way partnership with the county and the Fair Board and the city. Iris Dogler, our Human Resources Director, entertained a group of, gosh, this room was full, a group of folks from the statewide risk management group, it's called Prima, and they all came to Cottonwood to meet, and I think they enjoyed also being here very much, but it was a very nice event. She asked me to speak, you know, to welcome them, which I did. On the 30th, I attended a special recognition for employees and physicians at the Verde Valley Medical Center who were recently recognized by Healthgrades, and we'll hear a little bit more about that tonight from Ms. Denver. And on August 1, Brandy's Restaurant held a spaghetti dinner, spaghetti supper fundraiser for Sergeant Jordan Maynard, and most of you probably have read about Sergeant Maynard. He lost both of his legs in Afghanistan two years ago, and Homes for Our Troops is building him a house right outside of Cottonwood, out there in the country, and I'm working very hard, our staff's working very hard, even though it's not in our city, that doesn't matter, it's just, it's a community effort, and a lot of people in the city are working very hard to help him, and at that spaghetti supper, it's amazing, but we raised $6,006 for his house. This week, there's a display at National Bank of Arizona with all of the posters and hoping to get the word out to those customers, and we are meeting on Wednesday at City Hall at 2:00 PM, and if anybody would like to volunteer to help Sergeant Maynard get his home, do some more fundraisers, please come to our meeting and help us out. The Flynn Brown Civic Leadership Academy, we already talked about that, but what we didn't say is Casey Rooney, our Economic Development Director, gave a very nice presentation about economic development, the Verde Valley region, and Cottonwood, and what all we've done. And then he drove over from Prescott Valley, where he lives, and did the tour of Old Town, so that was very kind of him. And yesterday, I attended the funeral of Johnan Russell, First Lieutenant Johnan Russell, who was killed in Afghanistan on July 23, and I would ask for prayers for the family during this very difficult time in their lives. Tomorrow, we'll be meeting with Elvakuur to talk about Speak Out Arizona, and this is something that the Sandra Day O'Connor House is promoting, is visiting with your constituents and trying to get public participation, and so we're going to be talking about that tomorrow with people from all over the Verde Valley. The Verde Valley Medical Center will unveil its new Michelin, Curtis, and Tackich Memorial Chapel at a dedication ceremony this Wednesday. That would be August 7, from 11:00 AM to noon, and the chapel is located to the right of the information desk in VVMC's main lobby. The public's invited to attend the event, during which time interim president and CEO Barbara Denver, who is with us tonight, will talk about, we'll talk about the dedication and the people who have made, local people actually, who have made this possible, and a blessing will be given by Verde Valley Medical Center Chaplain John Jenkins. And that's my report. Welcome, Councilmember Howagie.
Thank you, sorry I'm late.
That's, okay, we're glad you're here. Thank you very much. Okay, the next item is introduction of new employees. We have Scott Ellis, planner, and Kirsten Jones, youth coordinator. So we have Baron Najid here with us tonight, and we have Haz Allen to introduce their new employees.
Madam Mayor, and councilmembers, we had, for our planner position, we had more than 50 applications for this position from all over the country, and we had some out of country also, and we selected after the interviews Scott Ellis for this position, and Scott has been with the city doing internship last year. He has extensive GIS experience, and he's been working on general plan and future land use map, and I would like to turn the microphone to Scott.
Okay, welcome, Scott.
Hi, thank you. A little bit about me, I am from Cottonwood. I grew up here, went to all the schools, graduated from Mingus, did go to NAU, got a Bachelor of Science in Geography up there, moved around a little bit after that, and came back here with my wife. We've been back for a couple of years now, and as Baron mentioned, I've been doing a little bit of interning with the city to do a master's, and it got me some good experience, and now here I am, so I'm excited. I look forward to working with everybody and growing with the city.
Well, welcome. We're glad to have you.
Thank you.
It's great to have a hometown person succeed. We really love it when our, when our youth come back or stay in Cottonwood, that is so much appreciated.
Yeah, I like it here, it's somewhere I always wanted to come back to, so.
You understand its beauty and its specialness.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Haz?
Madam Mayor, council, tonight I have Kirsten Jones with me today, and this position is shared between Cottonwood Oak Creek School District and ourselves. It's one that entails in the morning that she works at the elementary school as a gym teacher, and then at evening, she works with our youth programs, Cottonwood Youth Advisor Commission, so it takes a lot of hours and a special person to do this job. Kirsten Jones attended the University of Oklahoma, she has an art and visual communications degree, she's done some correspondence courses in early childhood development. I don't know if you've noticed our posters and our artwork, graphic design stuff in the past couple of years, For Rhythm Ribs, Thunder Valley Rally, and our Signature Series program, but they were done by Kirsten. She's worked with us in the past as a graphic designer, so I'd like to introduce Kirsten Jones.
Thank you.
Hi, we just recently wrapped up our summer camp program, which was a big success. Had a lot of fun with the kids, and looking forward to the programs coming up. Currently, we're doing the after-school program, we just started that today, and the PE program as well, so it's been a great opportunity for me. I'm really excited to be here and to be able to help foster the youth of the community.
Great, and can you share a little bit of information on how someone who would like their child to attend the Recreation Center's after-school program, what would they do to find out about that?
They can just contact the front desk.
Okay, 639-3200.
Yep.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Welcome. The next item is a proclamation, which I'll go ahead and read, and after I read it, I'm going to invite President Denver from the hospital to come up and explain a little bit about some of the wonderful recognition they've recently received. So I will go ahead and read the proclamation. Whereas the Cottonwood City Council is always proud to recognize those institutions which contribute to the benefit of our communities, and ultimately to all the people of the city of Cottonwood and the Verde Valley. And whereas Verde Valley Medical Center is a community-based hospital providing for the healthcare needs for the Verde Valley, and they've been doing this nearly 75 years. And whereas Verde Valley Medical Center has been honored by Healthgrades with the prestigious Patient Safety Excellence Award in 2013. And whereas this award places the Verde Valley Medical Center in the top 5% of hospitals nationwide for patient safety, and it is the fifth year in a row that Healthgrades has given Verde Valley Medical Center the Patient Safety Excellence Award. And whereas Verde Valley Medical Center was also given a five-star rating for joint replacement for the fifth year in a row. Now therefore, I Diane Jones, Mayor of the City of Cottonwood, do hereby proclaim thanks and recognition to the employees and the physicians at Verde Valley Medical Center for their ongoing dedication and commitment to providing excellent healthcare for residents throughout the Verde Valley, and witness whereof I have herein to affix my hand this sixth day of August 2013. So Ms. Denver, if you'd like to take the lectern and share some information about your recent awards, that would be great.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. It is very exciting to be here tonight, and really, on behalf of the Board of Directors of Verde Valley Medical Center, and on behalf of our more than 1,000 physicians and employees that take care of our community each and every day, I thank you very much for the proclamation and the opportunity to address you very briefly this evening. I don't want to take a lot of, a lot of your time, but I do want all of you, including the citizens here tonight, to know what a privilege it is for us to care for you. It is a sacred honor that we have when anyone walks through our doors and says to us, "I'm entrusting my life, or the life of someone I love and care about, in your hands," and we take that duty very, very seriously, and there's nothing really more important to us each and every day than the quality and the safety that we can provide you with. So we're delighted with these awards. We don't apply for these awards, we either achieve them or we don't. We've received many awards this year, not only from Healthgrades, but from U.S. News and World Report, naming us one of the best regional hospitals in the country. That is a very, very rigorous award to achieve, given the competition at the national level for that kind of acknowledgement. We received an A grade from Leapfrog Group, which is an independent research-granted organization that studies healthcare. Very hard to get an A from them, so it, the list has gone on and on this year, which we're delighted with because it tells us that it isn't just a good year or one survey, that we're getting it from a lot of different sources, and it has happened now five years in a row, so it tells us we didn't just have a lucky year or a good year. So we thank you for the confidence that you place in us, in the community, and we just intend to get better and better and better every day. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I always like to share the stories of my own family. My husband is past five years now after cancer treatment at the Verde Valley Medical Center, Sedona's campus, and so my family's very grateful for your care, and last February, he was diagnosed with congestive heart failure and not in very good shape, but I know that your heart and vascular center is pretty much world-renowned, I mean, it's highly regarded in the United States, and they fixed my husband right up, and his doctor, Dr. Hanson, and he's back to work and feeling pretty normal, so we, my family really appreciates you.
Thank you.
Okay, so just like to present this proclamation to you.
Thank you.
Proclaiming thanks and recognition, okay, I think that we just did, okay, so call to the public, is this portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the city council regarding an item that is not listed on the agenda for discussion. However, the council cannot engage in discussion regarding any item that is not officially listed on the agenda for discussion and/or action per ARS 43102H. Comments are limited to a five-minute time period, so if there is something that's not on the agenda that you would like to address the council about, now is the time. Did you raise your hand?
Are water rates on the agenda or not?
Yes, they are, and if you, if you have a form filled out, we'll, we'll collect those from you in just a moment. Okay, yes, that is on the agenda. Okay, item number eight is approval of minutes. Work session of May 14, 2013, work session of June 11, 2013, regular meeting of June 18, 2013, budget work session of June 19, 2013, budget work session of June 20, 2013, budget work session of June 26, 2013, regular meeting of July 2, 2013, special meeting of July 9, 2013, and the work session of July 9, 2013. And I must say, Matt, you've been very busy, right?
Yes.
We appreciate you realizing- We appreciate you realizing that transcribing minutes is not always a ball of fire fun, right? Counsel, any comments on the minutes? If not, I entertain a motion. Mr. Pratt?
I move to approve the minutes of work session of May 14th, 2013. Work session of June 11th, 2013. Regular meeting of June 18th, 2013. Budget work session of June 19th, 2013. Budget work session of June 20th, 2013. Budget work session of June 26th, 2013. Regular meeting of July 2nd, 2013. Special meeting of July 9th, 2013. And work session of July 9th, 2013.
Say.
Okay, Mr. Pratt made the motion. Mr. Dowling seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Welcome, Mr. Garrison.
Sorry for being late, ma'am.
Please note for the record that Mr. Garrison is now in the meeting. Okay, comments regarding items listed on the agenda are limited to a five-minute time period per speaker. There's no unfinished business. Item number 10 is consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the council and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or a citizen so request, in which case, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Item number one is award of bid and contract for the 10th Street Reconstruction Project to Alliance Street Works, Inc. Does anyone wish to pull that item off the agenda for discussion? Anyone on the council or in the public? If not, I entertain a motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Say.
Mr. Ilinski made the motion to approve the consent agenda. Mr. Dowling seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. New business. The following items are for council consideration and possible legal action. The first item is a public hearing regarding the city's intent to increase water and wastewater rates. And at this time, Mr. Rodriguez. So, I would like to go ahead and, and open the floor so that Mr. Rodriguez's comments are within the, the public hearing. So, we will open the floor, or we will open the public hearing at this time. And what I would ask is, sometimes we have really hot-button issues, but mostly, we try very hard to be very respectful of your thoughts and opinions. And we ask that you be, that you are respectful back to us and that we all converse in a civil manner. And I would appreciate it because it could be a hot-button issue that, that we would have no clapping at this time. So, please, we're anxious and to hear your comments and we will respectfully listen and consider them. Mr. Rodriguez.
Yes, Mayor and Counsel. Oops. Yell at. As you know, we had a workshop about close to 60 days ago concerning the, the water rates. Over the past 12 to 18 months, we've met on and off with a water rate committee that consisted of water and wastewater staff members. It also consisted of a council, a couple of council members, citizens from the, from the city. And we even invited the, a county representative. We did have Ms. Moran with us for part of the meetings. Unfortunately, she wasn't able to attend all of our meetings. Wanted to, before we, I got too far into this. I wanted to go over a couple of things here. And I want to introduce a couple of, of individuals that came down to, to see the, our process. We have with us Mary Rose Cato, right back there. Aye? And we have Chip Riley. They are from Singacor, Simcor. And they are our bond guarantors. They, if you may recall, we used to have XL Capital and they basically took over the responsibilities of XL Capital. Wanted to point out a couple of things as we go through here. I tried to keep this as short as possible. Our last work session was three hours long and it was very tedious. So, I'm going to try to keep this as short as possible. I do have a lot of other data available. If we need to, we can always refer to those other sheets. Want to go through a quick question and answer session. I apologize, this looks really small. It looked a lot bigger when I put it together. As, as we started preparing for this meeting, some, several questions came to, to mind. And I want to go ahead and answer some of these questions. One of the questions was, of course, are the water and wastewater utilities independent of each other? Because obviously, we have rates, but we're looking at water and wastewater rates. And we have a lot of county individuals that are maybe concerned that we're going to tack on a water rate to you. We are not doing that. We actually have, oops. We actually have a, the water and wastewater utilities are totally independent. They're actually independent from our general fund also. They are, they, they produce their own revenues. They have their own expenditure. They track them. We don't transfer any money from those funds into the general fund or vice versa, from general fund or any other fund into those. So, they're totally independent. One, I reside, next one, I reside in the county within blocks of a well. Why should I pay more when I'm in such close proximity of a well? Well, basically, the determination was made by how close, is not made by how close you are to a well. The determination had to be, are all, all the reasons of why, and we'll cover these, are on the rate, on page 18 of our rate study. A lot of the questions that are here are actually answered on that rate study. Why pay sales, we pay sales tax just like other city residents. And though that is a fact, both county residents as well as city residents pay sales tax and contribute to the city's operation. Unlike, unlike our, our, excuse me, city residents, unlike county residents, contribute a portion of their state-shared sales tax back to the, to the, to the city. County residents don't contribute that state, state-shared sales tax back to the city, nor do they contribute any of their income tax back to the city. So, even though we do contribute through our local sales tax, our current, our local city corporate residents actually contribute a little bit more than county residents. Does the city want to force the annexation issue? Cities and towns, and, and this has always been a controversy with, with people wanting to come onboard as, as part of the city or not come onboard as part of the city. Cities do not initiate annexation. It's the, it's those residents in those areas that want to be annexed are the ones that have to initiate it. Then the city has to comply and go through the process. We by no means are doing anything to try to annex properties. It's up to the, the county residents to request to be annexed into the city system. Questions came up as to why did the city go out and purchase Quail Canyon Water System, it being so far out there? The Quail Canyon Water System, at a cost of over $800,000, acquired it to support Verdi Village 6 and 7 specifically. And we're getting ready to spend another $200,000 to make that connection, to make sure that Verdi Village, Verdi Village 6 and 7 have the appropriate water pressure and the good quality that they are deserving of. With the current economy, why is the city council raising rates now? Well, in reality, there's never a good time to raise rates. Now, or when economy's bad, or when economy's good. Bottom line is, over the last few years, the city of council has consciously not raised rates to make sure that they didn't put a burden on our, on our community. It's gotten to the point that we have no choice but to raise rates and do so so we can satisfactorily, satisfactorily be able to not only support the system, but in case of the water, we also need to make sure that we are able to deal with our covenants.
And covenants, what's, explain that.
Our, our bond covenants, in a sense, are written promises to our bondholders who have loaned us the money so that we can go ahead and acquire the facility. We also borrowed extra to improve the facility, add water, such things as, as fire hydrants and such. So, those are promises that we made as a city to go ahead and, and keep certain, certain requirements. One of them being that we should have about, after all operations, excuse me, after all expenses are paid, we should have an amount equal to 1.3 times our debt service. And currently, we're not even meeting the 1%, the 1. So, we're off by quite a bit, even though we did raise, did raise rates three years ago. How are you helping conserve water with these rates? Well, we, to encourage water conservation, the city modified its tier system. We've added an additional 5,000 gallons on the lower end of it to help people with, with, with their rates. They, they don't kick in till after 5,000 level, 5,000 gallon level. On the upper end, we reduced the 20,000 gallon high rate to 15,000. That what that basically will do, anyone who is consistently using 20, 15,000 gallons will be charged at the higher rate versus waiting to hit the 20,000 gallon. We're hoping that that will encourage people to kind of, kind of wean off of using so much water. Why did depreciation amount in the wastewater calculation go from .35 to 5.95? This is in reference to the calculation on our wastewater bill. The wastewater bill that you, that, that our citizens currently get at 16.75 was calculated off of 2,001 expenditures. At that point in time, we had just about depreciated our entire water rate, water facility, excuse me, our treatment plant. Late in 2011, as some of our council members may recall, and some of our residents may recall, we made a major upgrade and increased the capacity of our wastewater treatment system. So, the calculations now are based on depreciation now, not on 2,001, when depreciate, when the, the plant was just about fully depreciated. That's the big difference between the 35 and the 5.95. Those of you who get a water bill, sewer bill, you, you probably should check that. What is the city doing to reduce and, and contain costs at the utilities? Well, both, both utilities have worked very hard, contrary to popular belief, have worked very hard to keep costs down. That's also why we haven't raised rates in so many years, because they have worked hard to keep those costs down. Take for example, and these are just a few of the example. One, we hired, we hired engineers rather than going out and contracting engineers because contract engineers, believe me, don't earn. Our contract, our local engineers don't earn as much as some of these contract engineers we have contracted in the past. Not to mention that their, their salaries are charged only when they actually work on, on city projects, on water and sewer projects, but they also work on general fund projects. And when they do, they're charged off to the general fund and not the sewer or water treatment plants. We've adjusted, we've adjusted our job descriptions to allow some employees to cross, to cross departmental lines. In past years, over the last, let's say, five years, what we've basically done is we've, we've combined departments so that we, we stop all the bickering that goes on between departments. I work for this department. I don't go into that department. We've actually combined them under a GM that oversees them and makes sure that if we need something done, he makes sure he gets it done. We don't, we, we have stopped the bickering over the, the different departments. They are now better trained and cross-trained so that they can help each other out whenever issues come up. And you will seal, see that very often when we have floods or when we're preparing for a parade or certain type of events. They all come together. It can be, it could be water, wastewater, public works, streets. It could be our engineers. Whatever we need, we get them down and we get them down, get them down to work relatively quick. So, we, we have done a lot of cross-training and they help each other out rather than being concerned about working for one department and not another. Also, another thing that the, the departments have now done is we, we very carefully evaluate whether we should be repairing a system and then going in there six months later repairing the system and going in six months later. We actually go out and spend the time to go out and decide, is it more, more convenient and economical to just replace a, a certain section, segment of, of pipe rather than just going in there and doing patchwork? And believe me, by a couple of.
Of show and tell items.
There's been a lot of patchwork done. This is just a, one example of the many items that we have found inside the lines courtesy of patchwork throughout the entire system. Want to go over a couple of things. Here's our wastewater rate. For those of you who are inside the city limits, those outside don't have a wastewater rate. The rate will be going from 16.75, or we're proposing to go from 16.75 to 16.25. Just a couple of, a couple of, of notes here.
26.25.
Oh, I'm sorry. 26.25.
You said 16.25.
Oh, I am sorry. I apologize.
Okay.
All right. The last rate increase was October 1st, 2011, nearly 12 years ago. Sales tax support for this utility ended July 1st, 2007, when we finished paying off these particular bonds for that utility. And then, since fiscal year 2008, the wastewater utility has used up over $2 million in reserves. Currently, if we have a catastrophic failure, we would have to tap in a general fund to go ahead and, and do a lot of these repairs. And the general fund currently does not have the, those kind of cash reserves. Our water rates. There's only been one increase since we acquired those companies back in 2004. That was in 2010, and it was only 8%. And knowingly, we only went by 8%. We, we were trying to, to keep our costs down and we tried to reduce our costs. Unfortunately, we still have some shortfall, so that, that wasn't able to cover it. At the end of last, this last fiscal year, June, June 30th, 2013, we expect the, the coverage to be sub-one time, when it really should be at 1.35 times. So, obviously, we're not meeting our, our bond coverage covenants. There was a minor change to the tiers to accommodate low-usage and low-income customers and shift costs to higher users. And that's what I talked about, mentioned a little bit earlier. We changed the, the tier from 1,001 to 4,000, to 1,001 to 5,000, allowing people on the lower end to go ahead and use up a little bit more water at, at a relatively good rate. Those people using 15,000 gallons and above will be, in a sense, have to pay an extremely higher rate. And that's all so we can go ahead and continue conservation programs. There, there's a number of other, other rates that are out here that we want to go ahead and mention. We're looking at a proposed rate inside this Cottonwood city limits and then a differential rate for those outside the, the corporate limits. And of course, this was also on the notice of intent to increase. The, the changes were all mentioned in that increase. Also, in many cases, the, the difference is there's a city and a non-city rate. Want to go over this real quick, like, because the, the committee had a hard time coming to this, the, the decision to make differential rates. And here are some of the, the bullet points I want to go ahead and point out. And you may or may not agree, that's why we're having a public hearing. The distances are far greater when servicing lines as well as pumps and other equipment outside the corporate limits. There is about a 60% differential in the distances between the furthest point and the city corporate limits that we actually provide to the, the villages. There's about a three, three and a half mile to about a close to six-mile range between the two. The terrain is, in, is, in much of the villages is very different than that inside the city limits, which of course makes costly repairs. Inside the city limits, for the most part, we, we, we have fairly flat terrain, few hills. And in a lot of the villages, we have a lot of rolling hills, which of course causes some problems when, when we are dealing with repairs. There is also, also a high voltage line that we'll talk about in a little bit further down. The Cottonwood Municipal Water Utility is a public utility. It's owned by the citizens of Cottonwood. When the utility borrows money for infrastructure, whether inside or. of Cottonwood. When the utility borrows money for infrastructure, whether inside or outside the city limits, the citizens of Cottonwood bear the risk of the new debt and infrastructure. Any liability, any injury that happens to, to anyone on those, on those premises for our employees are the responsibility of city, of the city, not necessarily the county. Inside the city, about 70% of distribution system is fed by gravity versus booster pumps, which means the electrical cost to provide water is significantly less per account because the only cost is the well pumpage into the gravity system. The village, the village system in Verdi Santa Fe are 100% pressure systems. About 60% of the leaks we repair are in the county, mainly in the villages. Since Verdi Santa Fe is a relatively new system, the staff also has to deal with three 7,200-volt direct bury, bury APS electrical lines that are joint trench with the water lines whenever we have to dig. The meters in the villages are primarily in small overgrown backyards easements that makes meter reading significantly more labor-intensive. There's also small, smaller wells and outside the city limits, 14 of them, as opposed to larger wells inside the limits, there's seven of them. And all require daily monitoring and regular maintenance regardless of their size. There's also 13 arsenic systems outside the limits as opposed to seven inside the city limits. Also, they too have to be maintained on a daily basis. Our leak repair figures outside the city, the city used to be higher until we invested in new pumps and variable speed controllers in the villages, okay, which has reduced the pressure variation and associated water hammers. And again, we purchased a Quail Canyon water system exclusively for the Verdi Valley system. The Verdi, Verdi Village 6 and 7 system at a cost of $889,000. And we're currently getting ready to spend another $200,000 to link those systems together. Wanted to go ahead and show a rate comparison. I've had people go ahead and tell me this really isn't worth, worth putting up there, but I'll go ahead and put it up there anyways. For the most part, the, we're, we're not in too far off of where we actually should be. Some of these systems that are, that are probable, they're lower than ours. Some of them are supplemented through excise taxes, not necessarily are they user fees that are available to them. And some of these are not even publicly owned. They're privately owned through Arizona Water. Same way with the wastewater system. Some of them have privately-owned wastewater systems. And that's all I have at this point in time. I do want to mention that, that the city of Cottonwood has been downgraded. I recently received notice from S and P that, that we were going to get downgraded again. So we're right on the verge of being, in a sense, about the lowest we can be. Yes?
I think there's one other thing we've done. How many hydrants have, has the city installed outside of the city limits?
Where are you? There he is. Thirteen, they've installed three, 13 hydrants in the, in the villages. And these basically are to support the Verdi Valley Fire District to make sure that they don't have to run a water tender.
And so that's an expense too?
That's an expense to, to the city of Cottonwood, correct?
I have a, a question.
Yes.
Back when, when we first bought the companies, I think it was 2004, and we purchased the Verdi Santa Fe company. At that time, as I understand it, there was only one working well in Verdi Santa Fe. And can you explain, you or Dan, explain what the city did to ensure that Verdi Santa Fe had a supply of water that we could count on for, on their behalf?
Yep. That'll have to be a Dan question.
A Dan question.
While he's walking, while he's walking up here, I wanted to, to point out, I handed out, I handed this, one of these out to just about everybody. And this basically tell, shows all of, all the different projects that the city of Cottonwood has accomplished. And they're both water and wastewater systems since 2005, along with the amounts of money that have been spent to accomplish all of these projects. I've got some extra ones. If anyone needs one, you're more than welcome to it.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, we worked with the Verdi Santa Fe Golf Course who had a well out there to deepen that well. The city used to provide a substantial amount of water to them in the summertime because their well would go dry. And we've spent a substantial amount of money partnering with them to deepen the well, and we're continually upgrading that. So if our well goes out, we can provide water service back and forth to each other. One other thing that I've, I've heard some comments about is that basically because the Verdi Santa Fe system was new, that we didn't have to do anything to it. And the city's invested upwards of a quarter million dollars in making that system more efficient, making it work properly. There's some major issues with it out there. So even the Verdi, the Verdi Santa Fe system, which is the, one of the newest ones out there, wasn't in engineering condition. So we did some upgrades. One other thing I'd like to mention, just as far as the inside and outside the city rates, I believe it's either five or six of the rate committee members live in the county. And they were the ones that supported the dual rates. And the very same people that are on the committee will also pay those rates along with the county residents if the council should decide to go that route. So they took a look at it, put aside their personal feelings and said, this is what's best for the long-term viability of these systems.
Okay. So what would, what could have happened if the city wouldn't have gone in right away and created a second supply of water? What are some of the issues that we might have faced?
We've got about two days' supply of water out there. And one of the other things we found is that while the booster station that was built by the developer had the capabilities to provide both commercial and residential fire protection, it wasn't properly engineered and installed. And we did quite a bit of work. We worked very hard with Verdi Fire District to bring them out there and have them flow water so we could tweak the system. And to give, to give the council an idea, normally you have a sensor in the reservoir that tells the well to turn on and off. What we discovered in that system was they had something called a pressure switch. And there was a 10-inch valve 31 feet in the air that would sense the pressure in the tank. And when that tank would get full, theoretically, that valve would close, the pressure would build back up down the line, throw a pressure switch, and the well hopefully would shut off. Problem being, those valves need maintenance. And the idea of having an employee 31 feet in the air straddling a 10-inch pipe trying to rebuild the valve was troublesome. One of the other things they did, we got a call right after we took it out, that there was water coming out of the 480-volt electrical box. And what we determined then was that the well out there actually goes artesian after about three days. And they hadn't sealed the electrical lines. So when the well would go artesian, of course, the column pipe would fill up with water. It had no place to go. So it would go up the electrical box. And it's a little disconcerting to show up at a well site and see water shooting out of a 480-volt panel. So there's been a lot of, a lot of additional maintenance that have been done, especially in the Verdi villages. But the Verdi Santa Fe, the city put a lot of money into that. So we have water continually out there.
Thank you. I would like to give our SNCORA an opportunity to speak if they desire. Is there anything that you would like to share with the council? And this would be Charles Riley, or Chip, better known as Chip. All the way from New York City today, right? Or yesterday?
Today.
Today. And going back to New York City tomorrow, as I understand it.
Tomorrow. Tomorrow. And we too like Cottonwood. So we, we, we're responsible for the bonds that we've insured for the benefit of the bondholders. Most of the bondholders will be Arizona state residents, right? Their municipal bonds, you know, tax-free and all. And when a, a credit of ours, such as Cottonwood, is failing the rate covenant, that's something we take very seriously, just like the rating agencies and the folks on Wall Street that are buying and selling the bonds. And the investors should be paying attention, but frequently they're retail and they aren't paying as close as, attention as the rest of us are. So we take our responsibility very seriously. And we converse with, with Rudy several times a year and, and look to get our updates and try to figure out what the financial health is of the system and the viability of the rates and the need, given expenses, both operating expenses as well as necessary capital expenses. You know, these are harsh realities. We all have to deal with them, right? And want to make sure that they're affordable and that the system is, is healthy. It is our objective when we underwrite the bonds that they're all a healthy investment grade or average credit, single A, just like Cottonwood was when, when we underwrote it. And it slipped, obviously. And so that's, you know, cause for concern. And that's one of the reasons why we're here. We're here just to watch the process and gauge the temperature and try to get a feel for competency of management and the will of management and the will of the council and the townspeople of taking care of their financial obligations. And wanted to thank you for having us. And thank you for having us and hearing me out. And I hope you have a good day. We'll enjoy Cottonwood for another 18 hours. Oh, we'll make sure it's a good 18 hours, right? If you have any questions, kind of, now's the right time or later? Not nearly as interesting as these guys.
You're saying it's going to, it was an A or it goes to?
Well, right now, I, I believe you have a, one is a triple B flat and one, I believe, is a triple B plus. Both of them, I believe, were originally As? Yeah. No, no, I'm, I'm sorry, go ahead.
If you wouldn't mind hanging here, because we have to have everything recorded. So you'll have to come up here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So we can record the, the session.
Plus, our, our, our audience at home needs to be able to hear what we're saying also.
To ask your question.
Oh.
Yes.
Come on up. I'm friendly.
You look friendly. You're from New York.
I am. People always say that.
I just wanted to know if, so if a B is going from an A?
To, to a triple B.
To a triple B. And then what happens? Triple B, double B, B?
Double B. And once you get below a triple B minus?
Right.
Or B double A three, those are the lowest of the investment-grade ratings. It's a very critical threshold.
Right.
Below that is junk. It's a high yield and will cost Cottonwood dearly if they had to access the capital markets. You know, say they continue to bump into a under 1.0x debt service coverage, which means they're taking money out of their, their fund that's allocated for the enterprise and maybe even have to borrow from the general fund.
Right.
Which will be not only bad for the, you know, for the water.
Mm-hmm.
Fund, but also for the city. So, you know, it, it's just sooner or later, there's got to be a meeting of the minds where.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, you're very welcome.
So if, if the city doesn't accept its responsibility in getting adequate rates to, to pay our bond, what can a bond company do? I've, I've been told by our finance director that you can come in and set our rates for us.
There, there are a number of different ways that this can happen. Frequently, it doesn't have to come to this. But frequently, there's a, a covenant in the documents. A covenant is, it's a promise. It's a promise that the people that you all have voted for have committed you for. It's all very reasonable stuff. There's nothing crazy about this. It is what we all do to make large capital investments. And we sign onto bond documents, and the bond documents want the borrower to behave reasonably in a financially prudent manner. It's like having homeowner's insurance on your house. Your bank wants you to have homeowner's insurance on the house. You know, the creditors have certain expectations. What, what we, what one could do is if it, if the city were not to raise rates sufficiently, is that the bond guarantor, the bond investors, or the trustee, all working, you know, ultimately for the bond investors, could file for an injunction as basically a legal action that would actually require rates to be set. So it's kind of like, you know, either, you know, folks do it, you know, voluntarily and no harm done, or ultimately, you know, it, it could have to be forced if we think that the town is just hurting itself by not doing the right thing, which more times than not, that's the case. You know, once in a while, you can have a bump and a miss. And, but, but after you have misses for like three, four years in a row, then, you know, we start paying attention. We take our plane ride out and coaches tight even for a small guy like me, 5'8". And, but we, you know, we think this is important and have a very good understanding, is I think there's about $30 million worth of bonds that we've insured, right, Mary Rose? Roughly? 32 between friends. So, 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 so that's one of the things that would typically happen. Something that you could also do is you would look to hire a receiver if you thought that, you know, the city management team wasn't doing the right thing. And you need, you know, somebody with the willingness and the ability to do the right thing. And sometimes that happens. We do not have that opinion here, by the way. We, we, we've had a very constructive dialogue with the city over the years. Yes.
Are these bonds that the city of Cottonwood carries?
Okay, we need to.
You have to come up here.
Could you come up? I'm sorry. I wish I could bring the mic over to you.
We don't have a traveling one? I'm sorry, we don't have a traveling mic.
Next time, maybe.
Um, next time.
What I wanted to know is the bonds that the city Cottonwood is carrying, are they connected with Aquila Bond Group? Tax-free bonds for the state of Arizona.
I'm not sure.
Because they're listed in their book. You're listed in their book.
Oh, they might be. Yeah, I'm not sure who ultimately holds all the bonds, but it, it's typically, you know, the, you know, whoever the mutual funds are that will have tax-free bonds that will be, you know, dedicated for Arizona. They're typically state by state.
Because I just got their, their book and they're listed in there.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't be surprised. I would believe it. I mean, it seems reasonable. It's a good credit, I believe.
It'd be smart to contact them, huh?
You would be. I bet you they would know.
Thank you.
Or your broker dealer would know.
Any other questions for SNCORA?
You, you'll have to come up. Everybody's got to keep me company if you have a question. That's the downside. You don't have to rush.
I don't understand what the difference is between a base charge and a volume charge for one.
Oh, I know the right guy for that. Hey, Rudy? We, we have a question on the base charge.
Okay. Are there any more questions for SNCORA, for Mr. Riley on the, as our bondholder? He's the managing director and the head of public finance for SNCORA. So, okay. So we haven't quite gotten to the point for the regular questions. Rudy, were you done? Did you have more additions?
I, I have, I have a backup, some more backup documentation if, if we, if we need it. If we need it, I can pull it out.
Okay.
But we're, we're pretty much ready to go.
Okay. And so will you please state your name? And have you filled out a form?
Yeah, I'm Dorothy Fussell.
Okay.
I live in the bottom of Verdi Village 5.
Okay.
And I'm, I'm, my water bill this month was 103. So let's see, I came into this two-inch base charge, $97.20. It would jump up to $60 more per month. And that's too much. That's really too much. And I object to that. I think it needs to be more equitably divided or something.
Do you have a, a hundred dollars seems like a lot to me. Do you water a lot outside?
We did some extra planting this month and it usually isn't that high.
Okay, you did some extra plantings in your yard and that?
Yes.
Okay. But what is it normally?
Probably in the 60 to 70 category, which would be the next one down.
Okay.
And that, that would be $25 higher. But when it goes up, you know, people that have bigger lots or bigger families. I've got a grandson there that's got four children. And, you know, they're, they're babies. It's going to be really hard on them.
Right. I understand. Summertime. I understand. Summertime is difficult.
They're in Verde Village, too.
Mm-hmm.
So, it's, I think it's a little bit excessive.
Okay, we appreciate your opinion.
Yeah, thank you.
And understand.
Yeah.
Thank you for being here tonight. We appreciate that. Okay, the next forum I have is Gordon Powell. Mr. Powell, please come up to the lectern.
My name is Gordon Powell. I reside in Verde Villages. You say you're going to conserve water with these rate hikes. Don't let them pull the wool over your eyes on that comment, because this happened in Denver, Colorado. The people in Denver cut their water usage and they cut it so much that the city council went and raised their rates some more because they didn't have the money coming in. So, conserving ain't gonna be your idea. And why can't you, across the board, raise everybody the same? We're just as important out there in Verde Villages as the people in Cottonwood.
You are.
No, we're not. You can see that by your figures. You think more of the people in Cottonwood than you do of us out there that support your town. And it's, it's true with your recreation center. They charge more for their, and I'm willing to bet, if you looked at your figures, the people in the surrounding area have quit coming here because of the rate increase. You go downtown, you go to certain restaurants, you go in there and you say, "I'm a person that live in Cottonwood." Well, they'll give you a menu, but if you're a tourist, they'll give you a different menu and the price is almost doubled. You go to fries. You don't do you any good to shop there unless you've got a fries card. Walgreens, CVS.
Sure. And can we, can we stick to the topic of water rates? I understand...
You're doing the same thing.
Maybe you're aggravating everybody, but...
You're gouging the people that are out, out of the town, of the city limits.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. Okay. Sir, I don't have a form for you.
You probably don't because I was, he didn't pass around.
Okay, would you just come on up and... Is there anything we can do to help you?
Mostly, I'm gonna have questions directed at the gentleman there.
Okay.
That gave his spiel.
And please state your name and...
Anyway, I'm Bob Reynolds, Verde Santa Fe, Dorado, Faze, Cornville. Verde Santa Fe has a water tank out there that I'm sure was required by the contractor when he was building homes, which means that system's probably only about 10 years old and the infrastructure. Who owns that tank? You people in Cottonwood? Because if you do, I'm gonna ask this gentleman, is that thing manifold to the Cottonwood water system or does it stand alone?
It's stand alone.
Is it stand alone?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We are outside and so is that tank. So, we shouldn't, we have our own water, is what you're telling me. And that was probably required by the county when the contractor was doing the development. So, I think your rates are wrong because we have our own water out there.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your comments. Okay.
Thank you, sir, for the answer.
Thank you.
Mr. Gillies? Bob Gillies?
I'm Bob Gillis and I live in the city. I have a problem with this. It's discriminatory pricing, too. It just bothers me a lot to see that happening. My water rates are gonna increase over 30% because I'm one of those guys that keeps my yard looking nice. I fear that the more they raise the price of water, the less we're gonna see in properties being cared for. And this is particularly true in the older parts of the city where people have trees and have grass and have bushes and flowers. I cut back a few years ago when you started doing this stuff and my trees started dying off. And I was still watering them, but not enough. And I marked the branches that were dying so I could trim them off in the fall. I gave the tree a little more water and those branches greened up again. But that, that's what happens and everything will die if you don't take care of it. And as a result, the city of Cottonwood won't be as nice a place as we, as people compliment on now. I think this is gonna affect how we look and that bothers me. I was trying to keep up with the discussion that Rudy gave and it ties to some of the things. I had read the plan that was in the, on the internet and it's a little hard to, for me to analyze figures I don't understand. But I believe that this, this rate also, I think there's more to it than, than the cost of supplying water out in the village. I, I really believe this has some incentives that aren't being set. And I, I, that bothers me because you, it has to do with annexation and it's an incentive to agree with annexation. I see that coming. And, and this is one of the things that could be, it's never been said, but it's sure easy to think that. And, so anyway, I guess I, I'm not sure how efficient the utility systems are here, are being handled. I, I'm, I always look for ways to improve things and improve with what you have in hand already. But it seems like every time we turn around, we're, it's, everybody's gotta have more money. And the budget comes up, everybody's gotta have more money. In my career, I dealt with budgets, too. And I found that you gotta be a little bit cynical with, when you're reviewing the budget and ask questions that people don't want to answer. Sometimes that helps bring the budget down to where it should be and bring out the reality in some of the figures. I have a question. In 1987, the voters approved a 1% sales tax to develop a sewer system. And in 1900, or 2007, the tack, the sewer was paid for and the tax was eliminated, but it wasn't eliminated. It was converted to the general tax. And I remember Dwayne Kirby saying, "The public didn't need to vote on this because it's already been voted in as a tax." Well, I, as a member of the people who were voting, and I did vote, I voted for it, but I was voting for a tax to support development of a sewer system, not a tax to go into some other fund. And so, I, I've always questioned why that happened. And I, I think maybe we ought to look at those funds that are being generated by that tax that was for a utility as such. It's the sewer, but it is a utility. And perhaps that tax ought to be put back into utilities rather than wherever it's going. I have no idea where that money's going. I have a question. When the water systems were being purchased and there was, the, the purpose was always to improve the city's water systems and to become a water system for the city. But we went far beyond that. And like I said, there's some units that are only being served by the city. Now, I guess I, I was wondering, is the city planning ahead to actually take over all these areas eventually? You know, is it apply incentives? But anyway, I wonder why the city went out there and spent money on water systems that in some cases, they have, they're not using at all for the city. If the city's gonna run it, the city ought to be in need of it. That's just my personal opinion. I guess that's all, all the things I have to say right now. It, it just bothers me that we consider raising, raising fees just something that has to be done all the time. Perhaps it does have to go up, but I'm not sure it has to go up that much. And I think discriminating against people that do not live within the city limits is wrong because there are some of those expenses out of the city that actually belong to the city because there are some, some wells out there that are serving the city. And those people in the village shouldn't have to take the brunt of that expense. They need to, you know, that, that should be a part of the whole, overall city's commitment to a water system.
Thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Strom? Ray Strom?
Hi, here in council. I would say at this point that I, I can understand that we may need to raise rates, as the gentleman indicated, but I'm not persuaded by the charts that were on the internet, which are similar to the ones that Rudy presented. And I think we're getting to the point where when we need money and you folks listen to the staff and the staff says we need money and we need money in terms of five and six zeros behind the number, but the projects are never identified to the community, whether you're a city resident or outside the city resident in this case, I think it does make a difference, that we know what the projects are and what we believe the costs are. We go through things and facts change and situations change and I understand that. It's very clearly on tape that we don't need an arsenic treatment for the Mesquite Hills well, but we do. And so, we gotta pay for it. But very clearly, the citizens were told, "Oh, no, that water is perfectly fine. We don't need to treat that." So, and it, it just is hard to believe, you know, a nice multicolored summary that says we spent 2.4 million doing this and life is wonderful in general. I think it's time that we start getting some reports in specifics on the projects, rather than in just a 1.2 mil for this and a half a mil every other year for that. This increase that you're talking about tonight is not just tonight or October. This is five years' worth of increases, you know, that are identified at this point, but they haven't been specified to a, an approved council vote that says, "We intend to do this." But that's the next step as we go through year by year. I think a lot of these projects need to be reported to the community in a periodic fashion. I won't say quarterly because that's just as bad as adding zeros to a dollar figure. But there ought to be a reasonable time in the budget process where these, these projects get reviewed for what good are we doing inside and outside the city by each? So, that then it's easier for guys that are sometimes classified as ornery like myself, you know, to say, "You know, maybe they're doing something good. I just can't see it." Now, I can't see it in the charts, but I could see it in a detailed project report that said, "Here's what we're doing and here's the good we're doing for this neighborhood." And if, and if neighborhoods are specified, then you would know that you're five years downstream before you're gonna see anything. Right now, the shower still doesn't hit the other side of a little three-foot square water stall on a regular basis because I'm on a gravity area. And if it did, the guys down at the bottom of the hill would probably have seals breaking out of their, their systems because they met spec when the city decided what was gonna be built. But the system isn't likely to be any better next year or five years downstream because there's no project to make my life better where I live. And there's a lot of neighborhoods in the same shape. I mean, how much of this goes to support Old Town and the Old Town merchants as opposed to the merchants of the city and the outlying areas that are gonna get affected? You ought to be able to see that periodically as a customer that says, "Here's what we're getting and here's what it's costing. And this is why your rates went up and this is what you're getting for it." Same thing with this debt stuff. You go through the tapes, there's all kinds of discussions and here's why we have to do this, here's why we have to... I think it's time we start tracking for the citizens. What our Get Well Plan is? How much of my water bill is contributing to meeting that requirement? If you all decide that you're gonna do this, that, and the other? Where's the debt thing in there? I don't care whether it's a fee or a tax or a, whatever you call it on a given day, it ought to be clearly lined out on my water bill that this is what I'm paying for. And this is how much I'm paying for. And I don't think that a lot of people have any idea of what the real ramifications of all that are, except that you all continue to vote to improve the life of departments instead of citizens. So, I don't think that your decision though, okay, these water rates as they're specified right now have been justified to the community, either in terms of need or in cost or in terms of a calendar program that says for the next two years, this one's doing this, this one's doing that and this is what it costs. I'd be happy to, I'd be happy to support programs that you could lay out and see like a project management effort.
Okay.
But right now, you know, I wouldn't call it a no-brainer from any standpoint of management.
Okay, thank you very much for your thoughts. Oh, Joanne already spoke. Okay.
I didn't speak about the water.
Oh, did you wanna speak again? Okay, come up, please.
She was talking about the bonds.
Okay.
This water thing is, I think it's really a pretty bad situation. And since I can find my papers here. I wanna go back to the very first article that was printed in the Cottonwood paper. And when he's talking about it just on the water rates. And Mr. Rodriguez says the city has found itself in self-violation because of the bond situation. And what I wonder is when the city decided to buy the water wells in Verde Village, why didn't they consider what it was gonna cost them and what the bond repayments were gonna be and so on and so forth? It seems to me like it was very well, very badly planned and it was mostly a plan on the, on the, on the part of the city to become a monopoly over the water companies in this area. And I've also read where it said before we was out of water, which I don't remember and I've lived here 13 years. And you say it's definitely going to happen no matter what. And you said you've had many complaints of a gouging by the city with the water companies. And in our neighborhood alone, I can see many yards, many trees that are dying in the Verde Villages. And a lot of that is because of water. And one article that really upset me, it says in the, "The village has restricted attempts to be annexed many times." And your article says, "Village residents are without voter clout. They have no voice over how much they are charged for water and also dental for the folks in Verde Santa Fe." And I think that is very, very, I wanted to say judge panel, but that's not the word I want. But it sounds to me like we are definitely being punished because we did not vote for And when, I've called Mr. Rodriguez several times because our water is so... And I've called Mr. Rodriguez several times because our water is so bad, we cannot drink it. Most people in the Verde Villages cannot drink their water, we have to buy water. You cannot use the water for humidifiers because it completely covers your water or your walls with white residue, and everything in the room is covered with white residue. And for someone that needs a humidifier, that is not in any way good for health situations. And when I've called, I've been told, too bad, tough luck, you live in the Verde Valley. And to me, that is no way for the city to respond to a water situation that is very bad. And just recently, we had company come, they got some water out of the tap, they immediately turned around, threw it down the tap, and they said, we do not see how you can drink this water at all. Well, most of us don't, we have to buy water. And I think at this point, we have to spend $30, $40 a month for drinking water. The city ought to be required to reimburse us because our water's not fit to drink.
No, 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 please, that's not necessary.
And some questions. This has already been answered because I had a question about the wastewater because Verde Villages, it's not on wastewater treatment plant. And when the city was so eager to buy our wells, why didn't they consider what it was going to cost to operate them? You would have think they would have had foresight enough to look ahead and see what the problems were and to take care of them. And like I say, you can't, we can't drink the water. And like with the humidifier, it covers everything in the room with white. I'm surprised when we get out of the showers, we aren't covered with the white residue. It is so bad. But you tell me, when I called in, tough luck, you live in the Verde Valley. And that was the response. And when I asked about the water, I was told to hire someone to come and dig inside my property line and put a filter in. Well, if a filter will cure the problem, why don't the city put a filter in at the wells and take care of everybody's problem that lives in the Verde Villages? It seems like the city's not concerned that the water... I know you've got all your tests, I've read all your reports, but the water is still not fit to drink. That's basically what it comes down to. I was going to bring some tonight, but I thought that wouldn't be a good idea for y'all to taste.
I drink it, too. So, anyway, your five minutes is up, do you want to wrap up quick?
But anyway, when we look at all of it and all the people that I've talked to, everyone feels that this wanting to raise us so much more than the City of Cottonwood is nothing but punishment because we did not annex. And the same way with Verde Santa Fe, you said ditto to Verde Santa Fe. And to me, that's not a way for the city or the city council to respond to questions when asked. And also, you mentioned it costs more to read our meters. Okay, if you have people that don't keep their meters clean, deal with each one individually, don't punish us all. We keep our meter clean.
Okay, so can you wrap it up? So we have a lot of other folks that want to talk, so...
You also mentioned that the taxes for the city, well, the city does not pay for our fire department, our road service, none of that. So that shouldn't even be considered. But I really think that you should reconsider the rates that you're planning on raising. There's many people that live in the Verde Villages that can't afford the water rates they got now. And if you just keep raising, we see, you say the housing thing is over, it is not over. We see houses being empty every day.
Okay, so thank you very much, we really appreciate your comments. Okay, Robert Reynolds. And if we could, please keep it... Oh, you've already spoke. If we please could keep it to five minutes so that others can have an opportunity, that would be greatly appreciated. So when you hear the little buzz, if you could wrap it up, that would be great.
Good evening. Vincent Zager, Verde Village 7. The concerns we have, of course, worldwide, planetary concerns over water, something we should all be aware of. Fortunately, we have Verde River and Oak Creek to supply water in the area. I've lived in this area 23 and a half years, six and a half years in Prescott. It's great being in the Verde Valley where there's actual water running, so thanks for that. The rate increases are the real concern. Apparently, it's a 31 and a half to 32 percent in the city, about a 63 to 64 percent outside of the city. I think that difference is extreme. It sounds from listening to the people from corporate headquarters in New York, the bond people, that it is important that the increase be made. I think that's obvious. My concern is the differential, why anyone outside of the city should be charged double. So in mentioning that the expenses are more, the upkeep is more in the villages, I guess I would like to see some statistics with data showing what the per-household fees are for repair and upkeep, and compare that with the city versus non-city homeowners to see if that really justifies this two-times differential. So if that concern can be scrutinized and publicized, published as to why this two-times increase for outside of the city can be potentially justified, otherwise, I don't see it, and I think we should all share the increase equally, and that seems like the most fair thing. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I live in Verde Santa Fe, and as you well know, if they build across Cornville Road, that's going to be Cottonwood property, correct? So basically, they're going to be getting water right across the road from us for a lesser rate than what we're going to be paying. And I don't think it's fair that you should divide this valley and have different water rates for different people. It's not right. And as far as people cutting back on their water, you saw what happened, and I'm glad that people do cut back because, you know, if the river dries up, we're through. But you saw what they did with the solar people. Now, APS wants to charge them a rate for keeping the grid up. And so it's a... I can see a little bit of an increase to cover our bond issues, but that much of a rate, mine's going to go up about 15 bucks a month, over half of what I pay now. And you're dividing the people. It's going to be, oh, you're one of them, or you're one of them. So, thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate your comments. Mr. Henry, Frank Henry.
Thank you, Frank Henry from Cottonwood. The bond representative hit a very key point of why you're reacting tonight and how you've been reacting over the last few years, actually. And they hit a key point that all the water people who are receiving the water, they are being controlled or they're given their consent to their elected officials. Well, you, in fact, I believe, are not the elected officials for Verde Valley Village or whatever. There's some people receiving water from Cottonwood Water System who don't vote for you people, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. It is my belief that that's part of the problem, is here's these people from Cottonwood piping water to us, and they can damn well do what they please, and I have no say. That's how this country started, when we got a little tired of being told what to do without any representation. But I believe Arizona has a solution to that, where we could form a sub-political district, a water district that is completely being serviced by a common water supplier. That way, Cottonwood could get out of the business, and everybody else who happens to be on a mutual governmental agreement with you, or whatever you call them, like Clarkdale, I think Clarkdale's on the same water system, right? No?
We're separate.
They're separate? Well, then we ought to form a district with all water users, and that district would be independent of the town, village, or city that they're from. I don't know what latitude Arizona law allows that to happen, just thank you.
Thank you for your idea. Okay, Jack Zanaya.
Zachariah.
Zachariah, Jack Zachariah.
Eight years ago, I purchased my house in Verde Santa Fe, and the salesman said that Brookfield was built on one of the biggest aquifers in the state. So I figured I'd never have any problems with water, or the rates wouldn't go crazy, and I just don't see what the problem is. And then also, whoever designed the system, wherever it was that the water got into the electrical system, who's the engineer that figured this out? Doesn't anybody inspect it or check the systems out? That's kind of dangerous, I think, for 480 volts to get into some kind of system. And that's all I have to say, I just can't understand it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, everyone. I live in Verde Village 7 and have for, well, since I moved here 20-odd years ago. My first question is, does anybody know what the population of outside versus inside is?
Yes, we do. It's a couple hundred more outside. It's, we're 11,000.
11,265, I would have counted, and where the county is, just about 200 more.
200 more.
I figured that it would be lower inside because that's a very convenient way to get the higher population to carry the load, considering there's not much room for expansion within the city limits. And it would be easier if you could spread the load for everybody. The outside, you need us as much as we need you. If you didn't have us, you'd be losing all kinds of revenue. There wouldn't be sales tax coming in, even though you say that there's a portion of that you don't get, you'd lose a whole lot more than if you didn't have us. Why can't we all share the load? In 2010, Tucson had this same problem. They... But they were different because the outside areas that weren't annexed into their areas, they chose to build water. They went out and built wells, they put in infrastructure for all of those, and then said, wow, now we're carrying this whole load, it's a problem, we've got to charge you more. The difference is, you didn't extend water service into a new area. You bought an existing water company, which I used to buy water from. I had very reasonable rates. You made the choice to buy these wells, warts and all, and now you're going to charge me 30 percent more to remove any warts. That makes no sense. Are you going to charge... You know, have you approved another housing unit across from Verde Santa Fe? I believe I heard something not that long ago that, you know, several hundred more homes in rec center and pool and whatever was going to go in out there. Are they getting charged more? Are they going to be charged more than I am? Or are they going to pay the in-rate, as the gentleman previous said? That isn't fair. We all need the water, we should all pay for the water. I understand we need an increase, that's totally fair. But it's not fair to segregate. In this country specifically, how long have we been fighting segregation? And yet, here we go again, just in a different way. You say that it is, you know, it's over the total cost spent over the nine years was more spent out or in. Are there any statistics for what was spent outside versus inside? Because it looks like you're trying to justify that the higher rates are, that the outside is incurring all of those expenses, including highway...
Just before you get off that note, yes, we have documented that it is more costly for us outside of the corporate limits and inside the corporate limits.
And is that including the Highway 260?
There is nothing on Highway 260 at this point in time.
Okay. Because Highway 260 shouldn't be included in that, you need that artery to get to Cottonwood proper. And I know you say it's, you know, it's not that you're pushing for annexation, but it's convenient strong-arm tactic to say, oh, we're not pushing for that, but if we jam you hard enough, you're going to want to do that. If we had annexed, the numerous times that this has come up into the Verde Village and we've said no, if we had chosen to go do it, would we all be paying the same rate now? Would that get us out of the boat? Would it fix the bond issue? Because it seems to me we're all in this together. The bond is the bond, no matter what, and it's all of us, it's not us versus them. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your thoughts.
My name's Aroshen Bilimoria, and I live in Verde Village 8, and I wanted to thank you, Madam Mayor and Council members, for taking our time and your time to hold this hearing and also scheduling the next one. I do have a question, and I don't know if you'd like me to direct it to you or to Mr. Rodriguez.
If you would direct it to us, and then he'll chip in if he needs to, that would be great.
Thank you. My question is this. When I did call the office, I did ask if before the rate change occurred on October 1st, as is mentioned in the notice, would we receive some information along with our bills, as we did for this notice, about the exact rate change effective October 1st? That is my question, and then I have just a very short comment.
Yes, we have to disclose, so, yes, you will.
And so what is underlying that question, obviously, is, are these, are both these hearings just for us to voice our comments? Or will, in fact, the questions that have been raised and the comments that have been made in some way be taken into consideration and incorporated and taken under advisement?
Yes, the public hearing process is for us to listen to you, all of the speakers, as we determine what we need to do for the future.
So I suppose the motto that's emerging from this hearing is, let's not strangle the goose that may be laying a golden egg, Mr. Riley. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, I have one more speaker, but if anybody that hasn't spoken would like to, please get a form and sign it. Okay, the next one is Mr. Kyler, Ed Kyler. Ed Kyler.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Thank you for this opportunity to voice my comments. For the last, seems like eternity, I spent a lot of Wednesdays sitting with Mr. Rodriguez and the remainder of this committee that discussed these water rates at grid length, reviewed the facts, the figures, the numbers. I missed Mr. Rodriguez's presentation tonight because I was late getting here. I apologize for that. However, I feel the need to say that I understand the comments from the people who are not pleased with what happened, but as a citizen of the city of Cottonwood, and first of all, for those people out there, I'm not an employee of the city. I volunteered for this committee like I wish some of you others had. I feel that to keep the water system in its, in better shape than it is today, which is only going to get worse if we don't raise the rates. As far as the folks that live outside the city, Cottonwood is not the only city in the state of Arizona or probably the United States that charges more for outside. The city of Phoenix does that and their rates are similar in percentages to what Cottonwood is doing. So having said all that, I won't take any more of the council's time other than I think we need to do this in order to keep our water system and the sewer system up to where it should be and maybe even better than it should be. Thank you.
Appreciate your comments. Dr. Richards.
Dr. Bob Richards, 1495 East Questview Drive, Cottonwood, Arizona. Mayor, city council staff, members of the public. I also apologize for not being here earlier. I was sitting home and I was going to watch part of this on television and I see that the television people are here, but the Clippers is what's on television, on Channel 2. It is not this city council meeting. I don't know if that's appropriate or not, but.
Council meetings don't normally go live, they just take the like.
Excuse me?
It takes a day or so to get it onto the internet or onto the cable station.
So we were live from City Hall, but City Hall was not, or the council chambers was not large enough. We can only hold maybe 50, 60 people and so we moved it here and we're not able to go live from this, from this location.
Okay.
But it will be on television for all to see.
Well, thank you for explaining that. I appreciate that.
I didn't know that myself, so thank you for bringing it up.
We all learn something, don't we?
We do.
I, so consequently, I wasn't here to hear Mr. Rodriguez's presentation. I presume that he presented on both the water and the sewer rates. Am I correct on that?
Correct.
Okay. One question that I have is that I know that Moody's and Standard and Poor would like us to be at 1.35 debt service ratio. I believe that's the proper term and I don't know where we are at the present time and these rates that the city council will impose on both the residents of Cottonwood and those outside of Cottonwood, how close will that come to getting to that 1.35 bond rating on the water rates? Second thing, I know for years, there's been talk of combining the water and sewer bills into one and that has never happened and with some difficulty in understanding why not. And I'm wondering if that billing is combined, let's say in the next three months, will that have a effect on the water and sewer rates to maybe with that increased efficiency to maybe lower the need to raise it as high as maybe you're anticipating raising it? On the sewer, we have no outstanding debt on the sewer. It's been paid off and I believe I read on one of the minutes for the city council that money in the general fund is going to be transferred to the wastewater fund, for lack of a better term, to pay for the riverfront wastewater treatment plant if the city sometime goes ahead and approves that. So I'm typically understanding the need for an increase in the sewer rate to the citizens of Cottonwood because there appears to be enough money in hand to pay for the wastewater treatment plant and so why is there a need to actually raise the sewer rate? So those are my questions and I thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. And I guess since you did miss and the public has gone through all of that, I guess my suggestion would be that you get together with Rudy and, because the public's already gone through all of this and I'm sorry that you weren't here. I'm not sure everybody wants to sit through another demonstration of what we've already been, they're shaking their heads no, so. As far as the combined water rates or water bills though, I think that's pretty easy to explain, Mr. Rodriguez or Mr. Luter.
They have something on there. They have, it has, it actually is a continuing process at the time. They're still putting that thing together.
Some, many of the bills have been combined. Mine is, was recently combined. Maybe this past year it has been.
It has been a very tedious process because of the way they're set up. Ones in, in some cases are in arrears and others are not for the wastewater while the water is built a little bit differently, but it's still a continuing process and we, even though it's costing, causing us some problems in our accounts payable, accounts receivable, because the process is still continuing and we're hoping, I guess, to get it done before we get the new software in place, I think.
We have to wait for the new software.
Okay. We're going to wait till the new software and have the conversion take care of.
Do you want to explain, Mr. Luter, exactly sort of what your staff has been doing to accomplish what is already done?
Certainly, Madam Mayor.
Because I know that when I became mayor seven years ago, this was a goal of mine personally and there's been many discussions with the city manager and even the city manager many years ago said, oh yeah, we'll get this done. But what kind of, what kind of problems did you run into as you attempted to do that?
We've run into a variety of problems and to date, we have an excess of 1,200 accounts that have been combined. It's a combination of some changes in state law on the wastewater side, a billing program that we're in the middle of converting and the fact that a lot of the, if council remembers, we still have, I think, an excess of 40% rental homes and many times the landlord specifically wants to keep the sewer bill in their name and we can't really force them to do this. But with the new software coming that I know is getting ready to go live in your department soon.
We start the conversion, hopefully.
The existing billing system we have, and this is one reason why Rudy and his staff spent, this council knows, a long time finding a billing system that can incorporate all these different modules we need, we'll be able to combine a lot more and anybody who is an owner of a home and has both water and sewer in their name, all they need to do is call the office and leave a request with Toni Fanning, the billing supervisor, and she will take care of converting those. And if it would please the mayor and the council, if the public comment is over, I've been taking a few notes and I'd just like to make a few clarifications if I could.
Okay. Last chance, is there anyone else from the public who wants to speak?
I just want to ask, when is the next meeting?
If you could come up here to the, okay.
I just want to go on that.
Okay. This gentleman would like to know, when is the next meeting?
August 20th.
August 20th.
Two weeks from now.
And will it be held in this building or at the council chamber? At the chambers. Okay, so it will, at six generally, six o'clock. One other comment, Mr. Peterson? Want to be sure every citizen and resident has a chance to speak if they wish.
I'm Dan Peterson, a resident of Cottonwood. I came tonight and it sounds like there's a much greater concern over the rates for those outside of our city, but I'm concerned about the tiering process and I did some internet study this afternoon. It's something that's, many cities are implementing and I think the basic reason is to, for water conservation. But I think there's a threshold there that's important is that people be able to use water. We're in a retired community where people have free time where they can grow things in the summertime. I know my father-in-law came and he wanted to grow a garden three years ago and the water bills were just too high and so we had to quit doing gardening. And so that's what I'm hearing too, is people have fruit trees and so forth, gardens and they're not able to do them in the way they need to do them to keep the plants and trees alive. When I built my commercial complex, started in 2000, we were required by the city of Cottonwood to build, to put in 30% landscaping and now to keep that watered is becoming very costly. So there's a dilemma. Do we take it out? Do we start doing away with that? With the tier process, I'm seeing that maybe in the summertime, it needs to be done differently where the water usage is going to be higher in the summer because of those things. Commercially, I have water meters for 12,000 square feet units, which will house, sometimes there's 70, 50, 70 employees that work in that area. It's really not fair to me as a landlord to pay those higher tier prices because, you know, we're sharing a master meter, but that's the way the system's set up. Let's take a restaurant, for instance, as they increase business, they have to wash more dishes or using more water and they're penalized for that and yet that's generating more tax revenue for the city and yet they're penalized for that. Or laundry, beauty salons, those types of things that use more water and it's not like it's, a lot of cities, what I've seen is they have a flat rate for commercial. It may be higher than the bottom tier, but it's a flat rate and that is maybe more fair way to accomplish that because you're, it's not just a family unit of four or five people. It's a lot of people. So that's the only comment I had is, as you consider not just today, but years down the road, how not to discriminate with people that need to use more water, but there's, I think there's a fine line between conservation and being prudent, so, thank you.
Going over your notes with us, please?
Acting Mayor Alinsky. I just wanted to respond to a few comments and correct a few inaccuracies. One of the themes tonight was conservation of water. A lot of people use gallons per capita per day, which can be manipulated way too easy. What the city of Cottonwood uses is how much water have we actually pulled out of the aquifer? Because that's what the real story is here, not using formulas and trying to get the lowest per capita number. And what I can tell you is from 2001 to 2000 through 2012, the city's pumping 17.5% less water out of the aquifer. And if you think back to 2001, we didn't have quite as many people, not quite as many businesses. One of the things, and Tom Whitmer, Natural Resources Director, has basically volumes of number on this, he looked at the amount of water we're losing through leakage. We had a very aggressive leak repair program. That was water that we were charged to pump, treat, distribute, and then it goes into the ground. So when it comes to conservation, one of the things I can assure you is that there's a variety of conservation, but the fact that 11 years later, we're pumping 17.5% water out of the aquifer with a much higher customer base shows that the city is committed to this. One of the comments I heard that the city's using Verde Village water to supplement the city and I can tell you the exact opposite is true. We have three different points of contact where we're pumping from the former Cottonwood Water Works system out into the Verde villages and without that, we would end up having to spend even more money in the Verde villages to look for new supplies. As Mr. Rodriguez touched on, the Quail Canyon Water System was purchased. The Quail Canyon Water System wasn't purchased strictly because we wanted a customer base out there, but what we had were two wells that didn't contain arsenic, so we can pump those wells directly into the system. We put a variable speed drive on, the line is complete, it's been tested, we're waiting for ADEQ approval and we now have the ability, after expending about a million dollars, to pump up to 450 gallons a minute directly into the Verde Village Six and Seven systems, which are two of our weakest systems. There was another comment about Mesquite Hills and arsenic. Little confusion there. Mesquite Hills does require arsenic treatment. It's got arsenic of about 39, but the developer's paying for that arsenic system, not the city. The property's changed hands several times and we will be testing out and doing some pilot testing by the end of August and the developer's agreed to pay all fees on that. That will supplement the, it's one of the weakest portions of our system because of the elevation and long-term will allow us, as Mesquite Hills builds out, to connect that over through Desperado into Upper Cottonwood Ranch and finally get the last connection with Clarkdale. We still purchase water for, from Clarkdale for the upper portion of Cottonwood Ranch. As far as the water quality goes, I can assure you, and I know the mayor and the city manager are well-versed in this because we had three people from US EPA out here for two days poking and prodding every single well we had and I can tell you, we meet the water quality standards. The white substance they're talking about is calcium. It's everywhere. The only way to counter calcium basically is a water softener. A filter will not take calcium out. It's a naturally occurring mineral. It was here when Cortez Lake started the system. It's here now. It's pervasive throughout our system. They talked about the city really doesn't discuss projects and where they took place. There is, what I believe was a seven-page project list over the last five years we presented to council during these strategic initiatives. That is available on the website and it breaks it down into whether it was a water project, a wastewater project, a streets project, community development projects, and if you wanted to see what we've been doing and you want a quick look, get on the website, look for our five-year project list. If anybody wants to know specifically what we're doing, we are more than happy to sit down and go through the projects we've been working on. We do talk to council, both at budget time, anytime a project is over $50,000, we have to come back to council and get specific approval on that. So there's actually two separate times that council gets to put their say in on what that'll be, the Bay of Montana system.
Each, each one of those times is, it's a public, it's in the public and the public is invited to comment.
Right. They brought up Bay of Montana. I have not seen any solid development plans there. It is grandfathered in under the county plan dairy development plan, but should that develop, the developer will be either through impact fees or through a developer agreement paying for the infrastructure, the wells, the treatment, the reservoirs. Special districts, Mr. Henry mentioned special districts. I have a little experience with those. I operated a special district for 12 years. Yes, you can set up a special district, a domestic water district, but they're, they're going to have the same issues we have in treating the water and making the repairs. Mr. Rodriguez touched briefly on the three 7,200 volt Rec Berry primaries that are surrounding the plastic pipe in the Verde Village. When we go to a leak in the Verde Village, it's in a backyard. When we go to a leak in the Verde Village, it's in a backyard about 90 percent of the time. And if you can imagine, 110 volts and water doesn't mix very well. 7,200 volts of water, of power and water don't mix at all. So a leak out there, not only do we have more leaks, but they take a substantially longer time to repair because of what we're battling with. There was another comment about the operation, the, why do we have to raise the rates? Because there's, on the sewer side, because of, there's kind of a common theme in some people in the community, that our existing plant is, because it's ADEQ-approved, is operating perfectly. I can tell you it's not. We have five lift stations right now. Everything but Mesquite Hills gets pumped up to the wastewater plant. There's five lift stations we have to take care of. There's a plant that was originally designed as what's called a sequential batch reactor that was converted into an activated sludge extended air. My wastewater superintendent's here, so I'm going to embarrass her and let you know that these people live and breathe sewage. They put their hearts into running that plant. And because there's no violations, that's a huge difference from the plant isn't costing us money. Mr. Rodriguez pointed out earlier that we've been supplementing the operational fund from our capital reserves, and that's really not how it's supposed to work. On the last comment, on the commercial, a couple ideas there. I believe it was 2009, at the council's direction, we completely rewrote the landscape code to make it more drought tolerant, less water use, more zero scape. Because when we came in, that was one of the things that the council also saw, that we're trying to conserve water, we're trying to be good stewards, yet we're requiring people to plant huge amounts of vegetation. Country Bank was the first one that went in with the zero scape. If you go by there today, it's some of the best-looking landscaping we've got in the city. After about two years, it establishes on its own. And then on the commercial, there's a flip side to the commercial facilities, especially the large square footage ones, having to pay more. And that flip side is, a lot of the capital money that we have to spend to make sure we've got excess capacity in our wells, our reservoirs, our pumping systems, is for fire protection. And right now, there is no impact fee, no connection fee, none of that on a fire system. So that's kind of the flip side. The residents pay the same rates as commercial, but what the benefit the commercial gets is they get their fire suppression, and we have to have excess capacity available to fight those. So there is a balance there. If there's any other questions from the council, I'd be happy to answer.
Council, questions?
Good job.
Thank you very much. Mr. Rodriguez, I haven't closed the hearing yet, so, okay, so we...
I just have a question for him.
Would you please come up to the lectern?
Sure.
Thank you.
You mentioned that they were pumping 17 percent less out of the aquifer.
Sir, sir, if you would address the council.
Yes.
Okay.
It's true that you're pumping 17 percent less out of the aquifer than you used to? Okay, do we have our own aquifer here, or is it coming from the Big Chino?
It's our own.
So nobody knows?
I can answer that one.
And if so, how is our aquifer doing? I mean, do we have a large supply of water, or how are we doing?
I'll answer the first portion of it, and I'll let our Natural Resources Director answer how we're doing.
Oh, okay.
Basically, what we have here, I come from the Midwest. In the Midwest, an aquifer is a huge underground pool of water. And you can pretty much spit in the ground, drill a well, and you're going to find water. Out here, we have what are called fractured aquifers. Our hydrologist, who's helped us a lot, actually did his master's thesis on the water aquifer in the Verde Valley, and he refers to it as fascinating yet frustrating. And in a perched aquifer, or in a fractured aquifer, you're looking for water-producing zones. What we do to measure the aquifer level is we take two measurements. We take a static measurement, which is after the pumps have been off for a couple hours, what the normal water level is. Then we measure the pumping level. And the pumping level is after the pump is run, what's the lowest level it drops. The difference in between those two is called the drawdown. Now, what I can tell you is the static level, the pumping level, and the drawdown for all the wells we have is different. You go on that side of the river, and we've got a well that goes artesian after three days. We've got another well up by Bill Gray Road that has a 40-foot static level. You come on this side of the river, and we're looking at 200 feet plus on a static level, sometimes down the 500, 600-foot range. So it's, once you find a good source of water, once you find a good well, and this is where, I go back to Quail Canyon. We went and looked at a well that had a good static level. The drawdown was minimal. It had no arsenic. That's what's called a honey hole. That's the wells that are worth their weight in gold. The city, this is a fact that's really not out there, and Tom's probably going to get mad for me saying this, but the city's using six less wells now than we did before. We found some wells that, most of them in either the Clemensaw or the Verde Village system, that weren't producing enough to make them viable wells. We had wells, well 3-1, which is on Pleasant Valley in western, eastern, out of the Verde villages, was being underutilized. We're starving for water over there. So we've come through, and we have step-tested every well the city owns. We've analyzed them. We've looked for optimum pumping. So as far as the aquifer goes, we can tell you within the influence of a particular well, what the aquifer looks like. But you can go, and this is a great example, the Mesquite Hills well is drilled about a quarter mile from a rancher that has a well up above it. Quarter mile away, geology's different, pumping level's different, static level's different. So, probably told you way too much about aquifers, but that's kind of how they work here.
So we got, tie water. So Tom, do you want to come and help out with that?
That was the second part. I'll let our... Tom is our hydrologist, one resource discussion.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, the Big Chino is a separate aquifer from what we're pulling from here in the Verde Valley. In other words, we're all part of the same groundwater basin known as the Verde Groundwater Basin. However, within that groundwater basin, there are sub-basins. And they're, and so the Big Chino is a sub-basin, the Verde Valley is a sub-basin of the Verde Groundwater Basin itself. Big Chino and the Verde Formation, there is a connection between the two, but they are totally separate aquifer systems.
Up at the headwaters, where they're connected.
I can't hear you.
So up at the headwaters, where the common stuff, where they're connected.
Sort of asking, up at the head, up at the headwaters for the, of the two systems, of the two basins, is where they're connected.
Sub-basin. Yes. The Big Chino discharges at the Verde Headwater, or the Verde Springs. The Verde Headwater Springs is discharged from the Big Chino at that location, or at least a portion of it is. That discharge at the Verde Springs supplies about 25 percent of the water that flows through the valley here. And about 80 percent of the Big Chino comes in from that, into that system, at the Headwater Springs. If that answers your question.
I think that answers the question, yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Okay, so, the hearing is still open. Rudy, did you have anything to add?
Yeah, I wanted to make a couple of clarifications and some reminders to the public about some of the things that have happened in the past with the City of Cottonwood. There was mention about the 1 percent sales tax. As the council may be aware, the 1 percent sales tax actually did set on July 1, 2007. It was council's decision to institute a new 1 percent sales tax that set that same time period for other purposes. Predominantly, it was, it was going to be used for HERF and also for the recreation center to help get that...
Will you please tell people what HERF means?
HERF is the Highway User Revenue Fund that comes to the city that's strictly used for street projects and street operations. So that 1 percent, though, it still exists, it was, that took a different form. It did sunset, and it, when the council reinstituted another 1 percent sales tax at the same time for other purposes. The, I know that someone kept mentioning about, it was, the increase is two times. Actually, it's just 30 percent above what city residents are going to be charged, so it's not a two-times ratio. There was also a question about the electrical box over at Verde Santa Fe and who engineered that. Well, believe it, it was not us that engineered that particular program, but we did take care of the problem. There was a question about why was it, why, what would happen if the Verde Santa Fe or other areas, Verde villages were inside the corporate limits? We'd be finding ourselves in trouble. Well, remembering that, the rates were based on the population that exists at a certain time period. That's how we came about with the different rates. It's not, it's not, if there was a smaller population outside, the rates would be possibly a little bit different. If the Cottonwood proper was a little bit smaller, then there would be, the rate structure might be a little bit different. But bottom line is, when we put a rate together, we take into consideration the current population at that point in time. So we wouldn't be in a financial problem. We would still be asking for a rate increase, though it might be a little bit different than what we're currently asking for now. We were asked if a lot of this information would be given to the public before our next meeting, or before we actually finalize the rate increase. All of our information is posted on our website. It has been for nearly 60 days, and will continue to do so during the hearing period. It's all readily available on the sidebar, and if anyone has a problem locating it, they can give us a call, and we'll go ahead and be more than happy to help them through it. But it is all, it is all on our website. As a matter of fact, the links are also on our Facebook account. If you go a couple pages down, you'll notice it is, all the links to all that information is on our website.
And if someone doesn't have a computer, what can they do?
They can give us a call at our offices, and we'll be more than happy to go ahead and print them up a copy of it.
Okay.
Okay. We try to avoid printing, printing as much as we can. The question was asked about the debt service ratio and where it could be at this point in time. At this point in time, it is below the one, one-times level, and as we all know, it needs to be at the 1.3-times level. And I think there was one more.
I think the question was, what does increased gas, is that one?
We're certainly looking at, according to what we have currently on our, on our plan is, we are looking at between, I believe, a 1.35 and a 1.4, thereabouts, in our ratio. We usually try to add a little bit of a buffer in there because, you know, with the economy the way it is, we don't know. We want to make sure that, we don't know what it's going to do, so we want to make sure that we get back to 1.35 or a little bit better. Mind you, if we are going to go out to the capital markets, we probably need to push that ratio probably to 1.5 to make sure that, that we have the coverage and that our bond holders will be pleased with what we're doing. The, the current downgrade that we have will take a little bit of effort and a little bit of time for it to change. Do not expect them to change anytime soon. But we are, I think, heading in the right direction with the hearing process and what we have proposed to our council.
So we actually, two budget years ago, were putting into our budget this $30,000 bond, or whatever it is that we owe now, into our budget every year because we were wanting to maybe take advantage of the low interest rates. But because council didn't raise the funds, is it correct that that's why we weren't able to get a better interest rate during these downtimes? Or how did that all work?
Right. About two years ago was when we forgot, two or three years ago, we got hit with our first downgrade. It was kind of peculiar. I think S&amp;P upgraded us, and Moody's downgraded us all at the same time. And we sort of kind of took a step back, and we kind of got a little concerned because we did have a downgrade. And of course, we weren't meeting our bond covenants at that point in time. Since then, of course, we've downgraded, we've been downgraded, and of course, we have been kind of going further and further in the hole as far as our debt service coverage. We've kind of peaked up a little bit, come down, but we don't hit our 1.35. We haven't met it for a number of years now. I have open discussions with Grant Hamill from Stifel Nichols, and he has also, again, mentioned that we might go to WIFA, Water Infrastructure Finance Authority, and ask them to go ahead and help us with the refinancing of the 2004 bonds and possibly 2006. However, they, the 2004 bonds don't become callable till November of 2014, at which point is when we'd like to go ahead and do it.
Got it. Mr. Smith, have you signed a form?
No, I don't. I can't. I'm also, I don't know.
Okay, great. Come on up.
Yeah, thank you.
Darrell Smith, 2335 West Desert Willow Drive, Cottonwood. The question for Rudy is, he brought it up, and I hadn't been thinking about it, was, you said the 1 percent sales tax, of sewer money went off in 2007. Isn't that correct?
The 1 percent sales tax.
Yeah, 1 percent sales tax went off.
The bonds were paid at that time.
Right. And that was strictly for, that was voted in strictly for sewer, wasn't it?
The way, the way I believe the covenants are set up, it was for capital, for, and we went ahead and put all the money into our capital account.
Well, approximately how much money was left over when that bond expired?
13.
About 12, 13 million?
I think it was a little bit over that amount. I can't recall off the top of my head.
And that money then was transferred into the general fund?
No.
It wasn't?
That money remains in a capital improvement fund.
For the sewer?
For sewer and other projects. There's 8.5 earmarked for the riverfront reclamation plant.
Okay, no, that's, because it was my, my thinking was, for some reason or other, that was originally voted in strictly for the sewer. And I could very well have been wrong.
I think there, I think there was, there is, there was, there's possibly some wiggle room for that. I do believe it was available for other projects also. I believe that they were available for the projects.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. It's time to move on. I think everybody's been given an opportunity to speak, and so if there are no more questions to come from the council, I would close the floor to the public and close this hearing at this time. Mr. Attorney, is there anything else that I need to do?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Want to be sure we follow all the rules. Okay, moving on to ordinance number 598, amending the Cottonwood Municipal Water Systems rates, fees, and charges, first reading. This is, no action will be taken on this. Well, there could be action, but there, it's a first reading, so there will be no vote tonight. Okay, so...
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
And you're exactly right, to the extent that the council would direct staff to do something different than what the contents of the proposed ordinances would suggest, that would probably take the form of legal action by the council to direct that change.
Thank you. Okay, so, let me get down there to this item, so I hang on. Come on, computer. Oh, it's so slow. I'm getting there, just a minute. Okay, here we are. Going down there. Okay, Mr. Rodriguez, if you would please explain this item?
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is, of course, the ordinance number 598 that will amend the water rates, charges, and fees to, as presented. This is its first reading. Wanted to go ahead and just go over a brief background on this. As you may recall, I mentioned earlier that we've been kind of working this on and off for the last 12, 18 months or so, with a committee that would meet for about an hour every, almost every week. We did have some breaks in between for issues that came up. However, the water system has, didn't, had a rate increase last in October 2010, and since it, since it was first acquired back in 2004. You may recall, we purchased these companies in two phases, initially three of them, and, which was the Cortis Lakes, the Clemensaw. the Clemensaw, and one other at this point in time, I think it was Pivotal, over at the Verde Santa Fe in 2004, and then acquired the Cottonwood Water Works in 2006. You know, we, the council has been working very hard and had, knows, understands that there has been issues with trying to raise our rates, and the council has made conscious decisions in the past to keep those rates low because of the economy and how rough it has been for local residents, as well as those residents outside the, the corporate limits. However, those delays in adjusting the rates have caused us a bit of a problem, including two downgrades, actually, four downgrades in the last few years. Wanted to also note that this is, this has been a problem that's been prevalent for a number of years. That's also why we received from Syncora a notice of noncompliance, basically telling us that they understand that there's an issue and it needs to be resolved. That later, that letter also went to Bank of New York, who happens to be our trustee for this particular bond, and they too issued me a formal letter of noncompliance. One of the things, I, I have a good working relationship with Syncora and, and both S&amp;P and Moody's and Bank of New York was another one. I had to have some conversations as far as where, what the process would be. I am certain that tomorrow sometime, I'm going to be getting some calls from wanting to know where our council stands on this, though it is an ordinance and it will require a second reading. This will, today will be a gauge as to where we're going with this, and it will be a very important milestone for us. Wanted to just go ahead and remind everyone that the second reading and, and possible adoption of this ordinance is scheduled for the 20th of August, 6:00 PM, over at the council chambers. And we're, we're still recommending that the council go ahead and give the first reading as it is presented, and we will bring it back again on August 2nd.
Any discussion by the council on this item?
I would say go ahead with the first reading.
Deputy Clerk, please read ordinance number 598 by title only.
Ordinance number 598, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Arizona, amending the city's municipal water system rates, fees and charges. Madam Mayor.
Okay. Item number three is ordinance number 599, amending the city's wastewater utilities rates, charges and fees, first reading. Mr. Rodriguez.
Yes, Mayor, Council, this ordinance number 599 amends the wastewater fees, charges as presented. Again, this is our first reading. Wanted to again remind council that we have not raised the rates since October 1st of 2001. At, at that point, we were even considering rates in the 18 to $20 level back then. So, obviously, we're, we're, we're actually probably not too far behind at the current The big concern, of course, here is that we've blown through, you know, nearly $2 million of, of reserves that that particular fund had back in 2007, and it cannot, and that cannot continue. Recent budget talks that we've had clearly show that the, the general fund is in no position to try to supplement the wastewater facility or any other facility except the ones it currently has. The fortunate thing is currently, the, the wastewater treatment plant does not have any debt to speak of. If there is any debt, that will be divided amongst, equally amongst all the different residents in the county, in the, in the city. And the, the, so it doesn't show anything currently in our debt service. There, there is a number for, there's a calculation for the administrative portion of the sewer, the operational, and the, the depreciation. I already mentioned the depreciation shown on the current calculations are 595, quite lot, quite a bit larger than it was in 2007 when we actually had completed paying all of our debt and our old plant had been depreciated. Since then, we have expanded quite a bit. At this point in time, you know, I, we're recommending that council go ahead and approve the proposed ordinance to increase the wastewater rates as presented.
Council, any comments, questions? Members of the public on either of these ordinances, any additional comments? Mr. Gillies?
I guess, I guess I'm somewhat concerned that all that's been said tonight was kind of mute. It's too late to say, and that, that bothers me, and I know it bothers a lot of other people. I've heard this before, that we come, come for public hearings, but the minds have already been made up, and that is a problem, and it destroys confidence.
Mr. Ilinski?
I guess I, I have a problem with that. I remember hearings in the past where there was a motion to postpone a decision until they'd had a chance to go over everything that had been said, and that was overridden, and that, that wasn't a good thing either. So, anyway, I, I just see these things as not a good way to deal with the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ilinski?
There's a couple others I'd like to say.
Okay. Yes, ma'am. If you give your name, please.
Madam Mayor, I'm Roche Villamoria again, and I would like to ask for some clarification. My understanding from the written notice we got is that there were going to be two public hearings, and that included a second hearing with comments.
No, ma'am, there is a public hearing tonight, and the 20th, you can, you can still comment.
All right. Thank you for that clarification. My concern gets even deeper, because I understood that and I thank you, you're right. But when I hear Mr. Rodriguez invite the council to give him a preliminary reading before the second meeting with public comment has taken place, to me, that is of great concern. I understand the pressure you feel, but I just wonder if you feel this is within the regular order of business, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Mr. Ilinski?
I, I just wanted to say, first off, I really do appreciate everyone showing up tonight to the public hearing. I, I feel that it's unfortunate that you believe this is a done deal at this point, because the council has, has worked on this for well over a year, just on this specific rate increase, but we've been struggling with this issue for years and years, and due to the economy and many other reasons, we haven't raised the rates. But I, it, it is, it is unfortunate you think it's a done deal, but we've, we really have pored over this. We've set up a committee to look at these rates. We haven't taken this lightly at all, and we do listen to your comments, and we've heard many of these comments over the past year, and I'm sorry that this is the first that you have heard of this, but this is something that's necessary and it's, and it's critical that we, we do this rate increase. I've, I've looked over everything. I'm, I'm very comfortable with what we're doing right now. I just, I wish that you had heard about this sooner and that you could have been involved in the process a little bit sooner, and I, I do know how you feel right now, and I'm sorry for that.
Okay. Sir?
Yeah, Mayor, Council, Jerry Fisher here again. The only thing that concerns me is, don't charge people two separate rates. You're, you're drawing a, a line in the sand here in people outside the city limits. You know, there's other places to shop in Arizona beside Cottonwood. We spend 99 percent of our money here. We can change that starting tomorrow. Thank you.
And we really, we do, I mean, we do provide services for, for those funds too. I mean, we-
Don't charge two separate rates.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate your opinion. Okay, Council, any comments?
Dr. Richards?
Mayor, city council staff and public. Mr. Smith brought up the question about the 1 percent sales tax raise, or maybe it was 0.1 percent, I can't remember, and was all, off the sewer, which was paid off, and Rudy couldn't answer that question, and I believe it came up while you were mayor, or maybe when Ruben was mayor, so maybe you could give some clarification on that particular, and if you would like, maybe Mr. Smith can repeat that question regarding the, the sewer debt.
Okay. I'm not sure.
Yeah, ask him again, please.
Yes, my question was, when that, that sewer, 1 percent went off in 2007, it was my understanding that that 1 percent was voted in strictly to be used for the sewer, not for anything else. And then when that expired, granted, the city went ahead and put a new one on. However, there was money left over out of that fund, approximately 12 to 13 million dollars. Now, if that money was dedicated strict, that bond was, or tax was dedicated strictly for the sewer, where did that 12 to 13 million dollars go? It was my understanding, when I asked Rudy at the time, he said they transferred it over to the general fund. And some questions came up there, well, how could they do that when it was dedicated strictly for the sewer? Then it was brought up again, and I'm trying to remember exactly when. Oh, boy, it's, I gotta go on back. Well, that was basically it, and, and then Rudy mentioned they took eight and a half million dollars, they're gonna put it for the wastewater treatment plant, but if there was 13, approximately 12 to 13 million dollars, and he said we blew through 12, 2 million, where is the other 2 or 3 million dollars? Where has that gone?
And I think it's the difference between capital and operations, but-
It's two different funds, Mayor. Let me-
Yeah, yeah, I guess it was. You put it into the capital fund, that was what it was, not the general fund.
Right. Yeah, there's a bit of a confusion here, because I, I've never said it went to general fund.
You're right, you're right.
It went into the capital fund. The capital fund, sewer fund are two different things. Both have their own fund balances. The 2 million dollars we burned through in the south is out of the, the enterprise fund itself, not the capital. The eight and a half million he's talking about came, is, is what we've earmarked for the riverfront reclamation plant, and, and that money has also been used to do a number of other projects, including the, you know, some of the expansions and street projects that we've done, that we're going to have to find financing for. We're actually paying them upfront right now so we can get projects going with a reimbursement resolution in place to go ahead and get that money reimbursed back into our capital fund to replenish those sources.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments from council members? If not, Deputy Clerk, will you please read ordinance number 599 by title only?
Ordinance number 599, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Arizona, amending the city's wastewater system rates, fees and charges. Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Item number four is a ward of a job order contract to Kenny Construction for installation of a reclaimed water line from the Mingus Avenue Water Treatment Plant to Yavapai College.
Just want to say thank you very much, Council, Mayor.
Thank you. And we do appreciate all of the work that you've done on this project the past couple of years. I know you've spent a lot of time and to staff, and appreciate being able to do the study in-house and really, it's been a big burden on you, but it's saved us a lot of money.
It's, it's, believe me, it's, it's been, it's been a challenge, and I, and I, you know, the, the thanks goes to a lot of other people, that you were at a lot of these meetings when we had 15 people around the table to talk about it, so it, there, a lot of weight was on their shoulders too. Thank you, Mayor, Council.
Thank you. And we would like to thank the citizens who have served on that committee also for taking time out of their busy schedules to serve and, and help with ideas and thoughts. Okay, so, Mr. Luter?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and Council, it's okay to smile again, we have an upbeat subject here.
Yeah, this is a good topic.
As council's aware, we have been working long and hard on an agreement with Yavapai College to provide them with reclaimed water for their viticulture program. Council previously approved an intergovernmental agreement in which the city would design and manage the construction of this line, and then the college would deposit funds in the city's accounts sufficient to pay for this. Once the project is complete, the city will deed the line over to the college, and then we will supply them with reclaimed water for their viticulture program. We sent the plans out to our job order contractors, and we got some interesting bids back. The engineer's estimate for this was $340,000. It went up because the college partway through the project decided to add more than 2,000 more feet of water line to it. And we got three quotes on this from our job order contractors. Arizona Northern Equipment came in at $401,700. Tiffany Construction came in at $394,074.06. And Kenny Construction came in at $219,535.34. Because of the large discrepancy in the bids, we contacted Kenny Construction, we requested that they review their numbers, and Kenny Construction has supplied a letter that's in the council's packet that indicates they reviewed. Kenny Construction has reviewed our bid quantities and pricing for the above referenced project. We are confident in our pricing and we guarantee our bid amount. So, after thoroughly vetting out the bids, staff's recommendation is council award this project to Kenny Construction in the amount of $219,534.35.
And Mr. Pratt?
For the first time tonight, I get to say this. This is a no-brainer. This is a, an incredible deal for us. I think they wanted the job so badly because they've done so much work with the college, and they feel a sense of ownership up there and connection, and so I think it's a great deal for us. We'd be foolish to turn that down.
So, what does this mean, I mean, in, as far as, that means that we're, in order to water these plants, we're not going to have to pump the aquifers, that-
Correct. This will be, this will be 100 percent reclaimed water. We did agree as part of the IGA to hold the 92 cents per thousand for 20 years. At that time, it could be renegotiated, but it's, it's, as Councilmember Pratt said, it's a tremendous idea for both. This is water that will become a source of income for the city, and it provides the college with substantially lower source than anyplace else they could get it, and most importantly to the, the city, it keeps groundwater from being used to irrigate agricultural crops.
Okay, so it sounds like it's a win-win for everyone, and it's just another way that the city is working regionally with partners, other partners in the Verde Valley.
It is. And I have to say, the college, and not just because Councilmember Pratt works up there, but the college has been an absolute pleasure to deal with, from their dean down through their purchasing people. Very good, good people to work with.
And isn't it true that this can be a model for the whole United States? It's something that's so cutting-edge that others could take this and, and use the same model?
Yes, a lot of, there's a lot of vetting done through Ms. Chek, Cheek?
Chek.
Check. Okay. As far as the, one of the concerns with reclaimed water are salt contents, and the salt contents are still low enough not to cause them a problem, and as part of the agreement, the college has agreed, should the water ever need to be treated further than the A-plus standards we're doing right now, that they would put treatment equipment. The city would provide some technical expertise to suggest treatment equipments, but they would fund any additional treatment of the water that would be needed, so. So, it's a great cooperation between a, a school, although I do know the city attorney and I had to learn how to do a school, district, municipality IGA, a little bit different than government to government.
But you figured it out. Thank you.
For those of you who may be interested in actually sampling the wine that they produce later on, the reclaim we're providing is, is A-plus quality, and it's approved by the Arizona Department of Environmental Quality for agricultural use. So, it's very safe. It's just a great economic use of our, our water resource.
And that is a kind of, for cities and towns in the Southwest reclaimed and is a source of a future water supply.
It is the future.
Mr. Pratt?
Is it time for a motion?
It is, please.
I move to approve the job order contract bid from Kenny Construction in the amount of $219,535.34 for installation of the Yavapai College reclaimed water line.
Second.
Mr. Pratt made the motion- Mr. Pratt made the motion, and Mr. Ilinski seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
May I?
Yes.
Mine, mine, and I, all opposed, this is Karen.
Okay, thank you very much. And thank you for tuning in tonight. We appreciate that. Okay, the next item is item number five, banning pets at the Farmer's Market Jamboree Event area in Old Town Activity Park. And this will be presented, I guess, by Mr. Bartosz, or, oh, that's Kai Allen.
Madam Mayor, Council, really, I think the staff is looking for direction on where Council would like to go on this issue. The issues are, is that over the 13 markets, pets start to become an issue. Even if pet owners are responsible cleanup after their, their pets, you know, you still leave fecal matter in the blades of grass, and it starts to become an issue, starts to be smell, and also bugs start to accumulate over the time. In addition to that, we also have straw bales down there, and they tend to be kind of a magnet for pets. We understand that this is definitely a community program, we want to continue that tradition that we've carried, but there has to be some kind of, some balance there. After looking at other markets, typically they're held on concrete services, asphalt services where it's not as much of an issue. We kind of have a special circumstance here where the park is grass, where the market's held. So I guess that would open the floor to questions and concerns and direction.
Council questions, Mr. Pratt?
Yeah, I've been down there and often thought, why do people bring their dogs here? I've seen a couple aggressive dogs, and seen them using the straw bales as a de facto fire hydrant.
Yeah.
And then people want to sit on them, and it's like, this is no place for dogs. So this makes sense.
And I would just like to comment, I kind of thought along those same lines, but at the, but, not but, but and, at the Flynn Brown Civic Leadership Academy, the comments, one lady commented to me that she came down from, she came up from Phoenix for the Fourth of July event, and she was staying in Sedona, and they came down for our Fourth of July event, and they brought their dog. And their dog didn't like the fireworks, so they had to take him, you know, the dad took him for a ride, or the owner. And so I thought to myself, what will people do when they come here, and they have their pets, and it's 120 degrees, and they can't leave them in the car? So I guess they maybe just couldn't attend the event. And the other comment I received on Facebook was that Cottonwood seemed to be a dog-friendly community. So I just wanted to share that with you, and, you know, some comments from the public. Mr. Ilinski?
Yeah, I'm, I would agree with the mayor. I think there's a lot of folks that seek out communities that are dog-friendly, and that's where they tend to vacation and visit, so I would be hesitant to ban dogs from the park. I wonder if there's maybe a way we could maybe provide a little more enforcement there, if they're not cleaning up after the dogs, or maybe some more signage to, you know, indicate, you know, please clean up after your dogs, or definitely to keep dogs on leash, and aggressive animals, I think, shouldn't be allowed in there, you know, hands down. But, but I do know, I have friends and colleagues that, when they plan their vacation, they look for those communities that are dog-friendly, and their apparently websites and everything that you can plan your, you know, vacation with. And I think Cottonwood, well, I know Cottonwood's on that list because we have the dog park, and it's one of the best in the state, and I know we get, you know, kudos for that, so I'd like to see us remain dog-friendly for the economic benefits associated with it.
Mr. Dowling?
I do believe, yeah, and I agree with that part of it. I do believe, when I read through here, that they talked about perhaps just keeping the dogs at the, you know, a lot, you know, stay right outside the fence, but still be able, you could still attend the event, but perhaps, you know, leash the dog on, I think that was mentioned in there, as far as, you know, just maintaining, still bringing them, but maintain them at the outs, at their perimeter, or on the outside of the fence, to try and keep that definition in there. So I think they would still allow people to get the dog out of the car, and if there's a couple of people, they could trade off if they wanted to go in or out of the event. But I agree, we want to stay dog-friendly, but we also have to try and be people-friendly at the same time, I think, and I think there's a way we can make that work, obviously. I mean, we've got the dog park, and maybe we could have Farmer's Market at the dog park? Maybe have a dog market, I don't know.
They currently are.
Mr. Pratt?
Yeah, I think that because we don't allow them in, but allow them to, require them to go to what Hezekiah's terms, "park your pooch," which I thought was pretty clever. It says we're dog-friendly. We understand you want to bring your dogs, but they don't belong in the market. And again, I've seen them, you can't control people all the time and keep them away from the straw bales, and that's one of the biggest problems.
But they're, so is this going to be, is this going to be, they can never go in this particular park?
No, it's just for the farmer's market.
Are they banned, or is it just for the farmer's market?
Well, you know, let me add to that, because Connie Dietrich wanted to be here tonight, and she's over at National Night Out, but they've, the Boys and Girls Club has complained to City Hall that one of the problems they run into is the messes that don't get cleaned up. They were saying at least once a week, one of their kids goes sliding through a dog mess that they've got to clean up, clean up the kid. And I'm just concerned that that park may not be an appropriate location for, for dogs anymore, based on her complaint and some of the things we're seeing during Farmer's Market as well.
Prior to the establishment of the actual dog park, that was sort of an informal dog park.
It was.
It was off-leash.
We talked about that before the kids play there. But this agenda item tonight is just to ban them at the Cottonwood Farmer's Market Jamboree. We probably need an extra...
Yeah, I mean...
Agenda item to ban them totally, and they should be.
Yeah, but I mean, it's, it's not an issue of, as usually is the case, it's not the dogs. Usually it's, it's the owners.
It's a people problem.
Yeah, it's a people problem.
Because I was going to say, they're going to go potty on the hay bales, even if it's, I mean, if they're there, outside of the Farmer's Market, the hay bales are still marked as a fun place to be for a puppy.
Yeah, but they are not accessible to the hay bales if they're not allowed in the park.
Right, but that's not the agenda item that's tonight. They're going to go there, I mean, if they're not banned totally, they're going to go there to the hay bales.
Oh, you mean when it's not the Farmer's Market?
Right, right.
Well, that's why eventually, I think, we have to ban them totally.
You know, can I share something with you? A few years ago, I was at an activity, as a matter of fact, before Mr. Jurison took over the parking lot. We used to have the Farmer's Market there. And while I was sitting there, I witnessed a dog actually bite a kid, bit him kind of high up here in the, between the shoulder and the chest there. So I've always had an issue with people taking their dogs and mixing with children and in a close setting there. Also, let me refer to one time in Flagstaff, at a Route 66 celebration there, people take their dogs. Two dogs got in the biggest brawl you ever want to see in the middle of the people there. You know, one owner dove in there and tore them apart. I think it's a bad mix, period. And I've thought that for many years. You know, we all love our dogs. I love my pets, too. But there's an appropriate place for it, and I don't think it's appropriate in some of these activities where there's a lot of people, especially a lot of kids, running around. And it goes beyond the pooping on the, on the field thing, so.
Anybody else? Yes, please.
Do we have an existing ordinance regarding dogs at public events, in general?
I'm not aware of that. I can do some research.
Mr. Attorney?
Madam Mayor, Mr. Dowling, what you do have is in the city's Parks and Rec Code, the Parks and Rec Director is authorized to implement rules for the use of public facilities, so this would encompass that. So actually, the Parks and Recreation Director could make rules now and change them, but I think the department is looking for direction from the council as to what that ought to be.
Well, I mean, I, I have a problem with dogs around food and around places that are selling food. And, and I have two dogs that get along, they have been for a long, long time, but if a child, that, do they get into competition with each other, and do we have a dog fight, and then the child's stuck in the middle of it? So those are some of my concerns.
Okay, and I, I am speaking with Supervisor Chip Davis this weekend at the Flynn Brown Civic Leadership Academy event. He was telling me about an ordinance, what do you call county laws? They're not ordinances, they're ordinances like cities?
Yes.
Okay. They just passed an ordinance to allow dogs in outside parts of restaurants. So that's something to also consider.
Service animals, or just in general?
All dogs. Okay. And I'll go ahead and send this to staff and the council for you to read, just for your information. Okay, so what they're asking, what this item is asking is for, to, I guess, ban dogs from the jamboree and Farmer's Market. So any comments from the public on this item? If not, I entertain a motion, Mr. Pratt?
I move to approve the ban of pets at the Cottonwood Farmer's Market Jamboree.
I'll second that.
Okay, Mr. Pratt made the motion, Mr., how did he second it? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Jesse? Tim?
Opposed.
Opposed. Boy, I'm just torn, because...
I agree.
My dogs are my kids, but I do understand this issue, and I also had a child who had a part of his nose ripped off at one time, and so I do understand the children's issues. So I guess I will, it's difficult, and I still want to be, I'm explaining my vote here, I still want to be a dog-friendly community in every way we can be. But on this particular issue, I'll go with the majority.
And I would just say, I think that ultimately it is dog-friendly to not put a dog in a position to where it can be provoked into causing harm to itself or other. So I know that we want to try and include them in everything, but I think there are some things that maybe aren't cohesive to that. So maybe putting that barrier there is friendly in a way, in a way.
And we have the "park the pooch" place. We realize people want to bring their dogs, and we have a place for them, and that's accommodating.
And so it was six of us, yes and one no, on this item. And then another thing I just want to bring up to council, too, is that when we invited, when we had the Fourth of July celebration, and we invited Sergeant Jordan Mader and his family, they did bring their dog. And my question is, if that dog weren't allowed, you know, what would that family have done? So it is, it can be a touchy matter, a difficult one.
And Madam Mayor, if I can add to that, you know, when we were polling other communities and their markets and kind of see what they did, Boulder Colorado was a no, Payson had banned them at first, but she echoed our policy with the "park a pooch" statement, stating that it does open the door for pet owners. It says that we're welcoming to pet owners, but yet there's some boundaries. And I think that's what this policy states, and that's what the council is stating right now, is that we're welcoming, but there's boundaries.
Okay, so the dogs, they can still bring their dogs to the jamboree, to the Farmer's Market and Jamboree, and there'll be a place to tie them outside the fence, and they can be there.
Correct.
With their families.
Are you going to call it "park your pooch" area?
Park your pooch.
Park your pooch. It was coined here.
I like that.
The best of both worlds. Okay, thank you. Moving on to the, the next item is special event liquor license applications submitted by Lana Tolleson, applicant for the Cottonwood Chamber of Commerce, for a business mixer to be held at Habitat for Humanity located at 737 South Main Street on August 15, 2013, and the Rhythm and Ribs Event to be held at the Cottonwood Kids' Park located at 350 South 12th Street on October 12, 2013.
And I recuse myself.
Oh, you're recusing yourself, and then I think the vice mayor is recusing herself, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I move to recommend the approval of the license, liquor license applications as submitted.
I'll second that.
Okay, Mr. Garrison made the motion, Mr. Dowling seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number seven, intergovernmental agreement with the Sedona Fire District to provide dispatching services for the Cottonwood Fire Department. Chief?
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, we're seeking tonight, council, to approve if they would like the proposed IGA with the Sedona Fire District. We've come, we brought the IGA to you for direction in an executive session some time back, because we had some major concerns with the IGA as to how it was presented to us. This IGA would be to continue the dispatching services through the Sedona Fire District that we have been contracted with for a number of years. We went a number of years without an IGA. Last year, we mentioned to them that we really needed an IGA. They did so, but when they presented it to us, we, again, we had some concerns, especially considering our liabilities, the limits on their liabilities, our inability to withdraw from the IGA if they raised, increased the rates and some things there. After taking direction from council, went back to city attorney, had been negotiating with their attorneys, it's been a long, drawn-out, protracted negotiation. They finally now presented us with an IGA that meets the requirements that we had asked for, and there are also some other things that was in the council communication. We'll also be looking at purchasing some items, but that's a separate through a purchase agreement, to purchase some of the equipment that, that they own, that we're going to do. But for the IGA, again, at this point, we're comfortable with this IGA. This IGA will just take us through June 30 of next year with the presumption and the hope that our new communications center will be online for us to switch over to operations out of our own communications center with the police department on July 1 of 2014. If you have any questions?
Questions, council? Questions or comments from members of the public? If not...
Good job working it out, getting along in six pages. What an agreement.
Say again, I'm sorry.
Thanks for getting along with six pages worth of agreement.
Yes, absolutely.
Very simple things become very difficult. Yes.
So I entertain a motion, are you on your...
I'll move, move to approve the intergovernmental agreement with the Sedona Fire District to provide dispatching services for the Cottonwood Fire Department.
I'll second that. Mr. Ilinski made the motion, the mayor seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
I make a motion to pay the claims and adjustments.
Second.
The mayor made the motion, I don't know who was first, but Mr. Ilinski seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, discussion and possible action regarding the city manager's employment agreement. That's item number eight, item number, I mean, 13, sorry about that. Item number 14 is executive session, update of the annual review of the city manager pursuant to ARS 3843103A1. Discussion or consideration of employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, demotion, dismissal salaries, disciplining or resignation of a public officer, appointee, or employee of any public body, except that with the exception of salary discussions. An officer, appointee, or employee may demand that the discussion or consideration occur at a public meeting. The council may vote to convene into executive session, subject to the city manager's right to compel the council to discuss this matter in open meeting. And so through a letter that served for two meetings, upon our agreement, because I don't have a secretary, so sometimes we have to work things out, Mr. Bartosz agreed that executive session would work. So I make a motion to resolve into executive session. Oh, yes?
Mayor, I think the executive session was just put on there as an option.
Oh, okay.
And as the council will recall, I mean, we really went through the executive session part, and this was just the opportunity for the council to take action in terms of merit increase.
Okay, I thought you wanted to go into executive session. So if you do not, I withdraw my motion. So it's, it's time to discuss possible merit pay raise, which we have... which we have allocated for in our budget for the city manager. And I would just like to share with the council, um, our strategic initiatives. And you've all seen these. I didn't print 10 copies like I did last week. But I think (cough) we're all quite aware of what our city manager and our staff members do under his direction. Uh, we, we, every year we meet and we create our strategic initiatives, and he follows through and as, as much as possible checks them off one by one. And, um, we've been doing this now, like, since I became mayor in 2007. So he has been, well, no, first we have Brian, well, for only two months, but he's been officially required or it's been his job to ensure our initiatives are accomplished. And I think he's done a very good job of doing that. Um, we meet once a year to review his accomplishments as far as our direction goes. And, um, I think that he, he holds his end of the bargain on getting our work done as we direct him. I also want to call the council's attention and the public's attention to our projects and accomplishments list. And it's one, two, three, four, five, six pages. And as Mr. Rodriguez said, this list is on our website. And for those people who don't have computers, we can, um, print this list off for them if they like. They just need to let us know. But I think some of his major accomplishments since becoming city manager include, um, reorganizing all the staff positions. As you know, the reorganization, he actually had to really talk to the council because he had to really convince us that this was the right thing to do. And we had a lot of questions. We were pretty much doubting Thomas's, some of us, including myself. But I do think that he has proven over and again that this reorganization has benefited the citizens of Cottonwood. He's been able to pull people out of one side of the city, like on streets, and put them on, um, a different, you know, maybe buildings need to be cleaned up that week and maybe streets don't need so much. So I think that the reorganization has proven time and again, at least to my satisfaction, that he was right and it was a good idea at the time. Um, of course, you know, the city manager doesn't do everything by himself. He admits that. He's working for the council and he's working for the citizens and he's working for his staff. So out of all city positions, in, he probably has the toughest position in the city because he answers to the public, he answers to the council, and he's got to answer to his staff. So it's, it can be a, a difficult job, but I feel that he's handled that job very well. I do, I've told council before, and I think you've all experienced the same thing, that when you turn something into him, he's acting on it that day. And I just think his response time for me has been amazing. He likes to get on it and, and take care of it. Um, we've opened a procurement office, which we used to, um, all of our staff used to have to try to do that. Our department heads take time out. And that has saved them a tremendous amount of time. And we've been able to, um, cohesively save some money, I think, because we're not paying a bunch of different people to do this job. We've got one person focusing on it. Probably saves us some money. I mean, before, one department might have been buying paper and another department would be buying it at a different price, you know, for, in a different place. And we've kind of brought all of those issues together. I'm not explaining it real well, but you get the main idea. Uh, we've developed the Business Assistance Center, and he's taken on a lot of that responsibility to, um, ensure that we're incubating small businesses in our community, that we're supporting businesses. I appreciate the fact that I have people, in fact, when I was shopping in Old Town through this Flynn Foundation thing, um, the new business owner, Mr. Klow Larson, um, from the New Plaid Lizard, asked me to extend his thanks to both the council and the city manager and the staff. And he was raving about how well he's been treated and how he's been helped by our staff. And I think that across the board, that is the council's direction. We want businesses to be appreciated. And I think that as city manager, he ensures that, that his, um, his staff is doing those things. Um, through his leadership and working with Casey, we developed our revol- revolving loan fund. Um, we got to our focus on success, and we've been implementing those pieces of that one by one. And, and, uh, right now he's working on the general plan with staff and, and he knows to me he's accountable because I go to him and I say, "Well, what about this and how's that going to affect us?" And, and I'm holding his feet to the fire on this general plan, that he, he turns out a document for our review that is good for our community. Um, something that he's been really active in is the signs to direct folks to Old Town or to other points of interest. He also thought of the idea of, of making a place for tour buses to, to be in, to go to Old Town. Um, his vision, along with ours, is being sure that between Sedona and Jerome, there's a place to stop, and that place is Cottonwood. And he's been very key on, on doing all of that. I mean, he's worked with, um, with the, all the streets that we have been building. I mean, you know, we're pretty darn demanding because we've got a dozen street projects we're working on at a time. And, and his same staff that he's allocated to streets is working on sewer systems and reclaimed water. And, you know, I mean, their plates are very full, but he ensures that the work gets done on behalf of the citizens, and I appreciate that. So all of the, all of the streets that we have been working on. Um, he, he was key working with us and the community on the outdoor pool and, and on the recreation. Well, the rec center, we opened it after you became city manager. So the very last details of that recreation center, he was responsible for that. Um, what I've really appreciated, too, was our webpage used to be really just, it didn't tell the public anything. And it was something, probably one of the first things I talked to him about because it had been kind of irritating me for a long time. And he agreed with me. And I, that just blew me away because no one else had ever done that before. And he proceeded to really make our webpage, I mean, it is full of so much information. And we've got the transparency website, which I know Rudy's been, been a big part of, but we want to be transparent to our community. He was, um, a big part of the library additions that, when they were completed. One thing I really appreciate him for is you just don't see graffiti in Cottonwood. And being a police chief formerly, that was a big thing with him, was that, you know, we're not going to have graffiti in our town. And it's going to be a clean town and people are going to feel safe. And so council created, based on his recommendation, this graffiti ordinance. And if anybody sees graffiti, there's somebody out cleaning it up. There's a mechanism to get rid of it. And that's something I truly appreciate. The new transit facility was built under his, his, uh, watch as, as, uh, as a leader in the community. So out of these six pages, I've only gone through one page. How much more do you want to hear?
I think that's good.
Everybody would like to go to, go home and.
I think one of the things is, we're talking about the last year. A lot of those things happened more than last year. But I think one of the key things is, and it, it's been ongoing in the last year, is all you have to do is look and see how our city has evolved. I call it the Renaissance of Old Town. And it doesn't, it's not just Old Town, but you do need a place, you need a there there, like Dorothy Parker said about Oakland, there's no there there. You need a destination, and then it spreads out to the rest of the city. And while Doug hasn't done it all itself, I think he's been an integral part of it, and he's worked with BB Rio, he's worked with the wine consortium. He's talked with the wine people and said, "Yeah, open these businesses downtown." So I think all you have to do is look at the success of Cottonwood. And for my part, I think Doug's played an integral part in it all. He's represented us well publicly. He's been the face of Cottonwood. And we have to remember, we don't run the city. We hire him to run the city, and he's done a good job with our trust. And he's done the Holocaust thing. He won the Zimmerman Award. There, there's just endless things that have made Cottonwood look good, and I think you've done a great job, so.
Thank you. Any other input from council members?
Diane?
Yes, Karen.
Um, I had the unfortunate, um, experience at the hospital the other night. That's why I'm not there today. It was a wonderful experience at the hospital. Our firefighters, I don't know what I would have done without our ambulance and our firefighters. But back to, to Mr. Bartosz, we've been recognized nationally for what he's done with the Holocaust. We've been recognized as far back as Washington DC and other, other states in the Union. And some input that I got the other day at the emergency room was that because of his foresight, with Sheila Post's foresight to start Matforce, continue Matforce, to stay strong with, with this, um, message about prescription drugs and getting the doctors on board with signing up to the website. This is now, I was told the other day, being used as a tool for recruiting new doctors into the area because now they have a tool to work with when people are pill shopping and doctor shopping. And that is, that's been going on for years. I realize Doug's not the only one that's done this. But to hear, hear this just the other day opened my eyes again as to, we aren't just Cottonwood, Arizona, under our leadership now, with our council, with our wonderful staff, um, and, and with Mr. Bartosz as our city manager. We're nationally recognized in a lot of areas that we never have been before. So, thanks, Doug.
Thank you, Karen.
You know, can I ask a question, I guess?
Yes, Mr. Pratt.
We're talking about a, a merit increase here. Um, what other merit increases did we approve and what was the percentage?
Well, last year, um, for.
No, I mean this year, for our other employees.
Last year for our employees, I'm sorry, but I have to say this, we approved merit pay for two, but Mr. Bartosz did not receive it. So.
I have a question about that.
Okay.
Because it, we, we put off his review. This is the third time we've met for his review. So if we approve a merit increase, I'm assuming that this would be retroactive? Is that not the case?
Uh, it would be up to council, but that would be my recommendation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, well, what's the typical percentage? I'm trying to get a percentage.
Okay, for this year, was it three for this year?
We're actually kind of looking at last year, though.
Well, it's, it would be nine if you considered.
Well, I think you're just, you're just covering what was done last year.
That was six.
That was six, yeah.
But we're also looking at this year.
But that doesn't come up again until February.
We're playing catch-up.
So we could do six tonight, and that would be equitable?
That would be very fair.
That's my recommendation.
Make a motion.
Make a motion, please.
I move to approve a merit increase, uh, for the city manager of six percent.
Made retroactive.
Retroactive to.
Performance date.
Our performance review.
Evaluation date.
Yes.
Okay, you wouldn't put it back to your, the date of your contract?
Well, it's the same thing.
It's, but it's not exact.
The date of review.
The date of review.
The date of review. If you're happy with that, that's, works for me. Um, I would second it. So Mr. Pratt made the motion. The mayor seconded it. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Mr. Howdegy is opposed. Okay.
Thank you, council.
And, um, I guess, I forgot, I want to ask the public, are there any comments on that item from members of the public? I didn't mean to leave that part out. Okay, um.
Move to adjourn.
So I moved, okay, I'll second it. So Mr. Garrison moved to adjourn, and the mayor seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned.